You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next is the May third, twenty twenty-three meeting by the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May third Michigan City City Council meeting. If you would, silence all electronic devices, stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer. Madam Clerk, on the roll call, please.
Brian Dabney.
Present.
Sean Fitzpatrick. Michael Mack.
Present.
Angie Deitch.
Present.
Don Kraspolinski.
President.
Paul Prespolinski.
President.
Gene Simmons.
Present.
Dahlia Zagus.
Present.
And Tracy Tillman.
Present.
We have eight in favor and one absent. I mean, eight present, one absent.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, yeah, Consulman Sean Fitzpatrick spoke to me this afternoon. He was excused from the, uh, meeting. Any reports of standing committees? Reports of standing committees? I have a, uh, report being a liaison to the sanitary district that the issue with Long Beach and the sewer, uh, suit that's going against Long Beach. They have now counterclaimed against the sanitary district. And, uh, the case is in the, what they call the discovery stage. So that's where we stand with the, uh, issue with Long Beach right now. Uh, Finance Committee meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Consulman Paul Prespolin. I'm sorry, Don Prespolinski. The City Finance Committee was held, um, this evening, and we did have a forum moving forward. Um, the Michigan City Riverboat Boy Claims Docket for May third, twenty twenty-three. Riverboat from Fund two-two-three-five, one hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars eighty-four cents. Riverboat E F T, Fund number two-two-three-five, zero dollars. Boy Development Fund number two-five-zero-four, zero dollars. Total claims, one hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars eighty-four cents. There was a motion to remove the Laporte Chrysler Dodge G, uh, by Committeeman Paul Prespolinski in the amount of forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. Even though that this amount was previously approved by the council at the prior meeting, that would have reduced the riverboat claim to eighty-nine thousand, five hundred forty dollars and eighty-four cents. It was requested that this matter be addressed during the city council meeting this evening. Also, from that total, Chicago Communications transaction amount was for six thousand, six hundred twenty-seven dollars eighty-nine cents. Freeman and Associates, three thousand, four hundred twelve dollars fifty cents. Removing the Laporte Chrysler Dodge G, Laporte Chrysler Inc., six thousand, four hundred thirty-five dollars. And New Tech, seventy-three thousand, sixty-five dollars forty-five cents. The City of Michigan City Riverboat Statement of Cash Position. Fiscal year to date, May third, twenty twenty-three, ending balance, six million, three hundred thirty-seven dollars. I'm sorry, six million, three hundred thirty-seven thousand, four hundred thirty-seven dollars thirty-four cents. There was also a request, um, by Committeeman Paul Prespolinski from Controller Hall Master where she prepared and itemized, uh, the ARPA categories and what was appropriated from the sixteen, sixteen million, five hundred forty-nine thousand, forty-five dollars. And the available amount to appropriate as of March third, twenty twenty-three, three million, five hundred seventy thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars ninety-five cents. There was also a question posed or request of Controller Hall Master in re- from the Chair requesting ordinance four-three-nine-nine authorizing and approving the pilot agreement for the Silver Birch of Michigan City Resident Care Facilities. And specific information was being asked due to that this was a pilot and this was a fifteen-year agreement and we are now within the fifth year of the anniversary. Um, what is the amount that was received? And the prior year, we received seventy thousand dollars. I requested from Controller Hall Master to provide me with an itemized amount for the past five years of funds received, um, from the pilot agreement. It was also asked if or why not have these funds, um, been utilized to go towards any type of housing development. And the way that the pilot agreement currently sta- states is that it is to, um, convert back to the general fund. So I will be consulting with, um, the city attorneys to find out if we can prepare an ordinance for these funds to specifically be designated to be set up to go towards, um, housing development. And there was a motion to approve claims.
Okay, thank you, uh, Consulwoman, uh, Consulman Paul Prespolinski.
Yeah, I'd like permission to read the, uh, uh, subsequent report for the A R P money in detail for the public.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, um, this money is, uh, was allocated by the, uh, Federal Rescue Act and it was called a, uh, the American Rescue Participation Act. Premium pay was, uh, paid out to city workers of one million, six hundred fifty thousand dollars. Administrative contract for Baker Tilly, one hundred thousand dollars. Revenue replacement, one hundred and five thousand dollars. Fire marshal vehicle, U T V and equipment, water rescue equipment, rope equipment, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars and, uh, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Police Department, radios for chaplains, eight fleet vehicles, protective riot gear. Oh, I'm sorry, I got that, I got that wrong. No, I think I got that right. And, uh, that was at six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Park and golf equipment, maintenance, John Deere tractor, gator, four-by-four, a two-twenty loader, three F-one-fifty crew cabs with plows, tree work at the golf course, large cat exhibit. Um, no, I think that I got that wrong, I'm sorry. That's six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Yeah, I got that right. Revenue replacement, central maintenance trucks, a service truck and a director's truck, hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Street department equipment, street sweeper, uh, Ford three-fifty crew cab with plow and utility truck, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. A cemetery, two riding mowers and one-ton drug dump truck, eighty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Quiet Zone Project, one million dollars. Security upgrades at municipal buildings, a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Cyber security training, thirty-nine thousand dollars. E M A equipment, that's emergency management equipment. A crew cab and a U T V, thirty-nine, uh, eighty thousand dollars. Grant program office supplies, five thousand. Grant proposal platform, ten thousand dollars. Designated playground design, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Community grants for nonprofits, one million dollars. Community grants for small business, one million dollars. Animal control kennel expansion, a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Animal control vehicle, sixty-five thousand dollars. Bus shelter project, two hundred thousand dollars. Project Safe Neighborhoods, fifteen thousand dollars. M C P D flock system, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. M C P, Michigan City Police Department Raven System, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Michigan City Police Department Car Body Cam, six hundred thousand dollars. Infrastructure on the east side, two hundred, that's the four hundred and twenty acres, uh, two point five million dollars that's still sitting there. Repair improvements at the senior center, fifty-two thousand, seventy-five dollars. Fencing at Patriot Park, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Garbage toders, forty-five thousand, four hundred thirty-two dollars. I believe it was, uh, I don't know how many garbage trucks, it's not listed, I think it was two or three. One hundred, uh, one million, one hundred and five thousand and no cents. Vehicle for Patriot Park, fifty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. Street loader, two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Municipal tractor, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars and fifty cents. For a grand total of money spent or money appropriated, thirteen million, fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars. And no money spent for any kind of sewer expansion projects or water projects in the city of Michigan City to the state. And when I'm talking about the water projects, that's the lead goosenecks in Michigan City. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Consulman. Uh, would the Finance Committee like to discuss the elimination of the police vehicle from the, uh, budget and from the claims?
Um, yes. So the original claim total was one hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred se-
Fire view.
Excuse me?
It's fire view. But we just, hey, hey.
Okay.
The total amount of the claim was originally for one hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars eighty-four cents. And it was requested that the Laporte Chrysler Dodge Jeep in the amount of forty-nine thousand, eight hundred thirty-two dollars be removed due to that there was questions in regards to the type of vehicle, uh, that was being purchased. Even though this amount was originally approved by the council, there were some, um, additional questions that, um, the committee, Committeeman Paul Prespolinski was asking that, um, Controller Hall Master was unable to answer. So I don't know if there's anyone here from the fire department that could elaborate further because the question was why a Jeep opposed to a pickup truck? Correctly, if I'm wrong, if you want to elaborate further, yes.
The, uh, question came up on this, this is a high-end vehicle for, uh, Jeep vehicles. This is at the high end of their, uh, uh, not Gladiator models, but their, uh, uh, platform of, uh, their Jeep Wranglers. So my concern is that they could have bought a pickup truck, a crew cab, and, uh, so you could haul more people and more equipment because you can get them with eight-foot beds, you can put a lot of equipment. The Gladiator is a limited bed space, a limited, limited cab space. You can only get, uh, since I, I have one of them vehicles, uh, you can only get for adults in the, uh, cab space. And I don't know, they come as a four-door and, uh, I just think that it was, uh, could have been more, uh, user, uh, friendly and, and more efficient to use and get a pickup truck. So that's why I made the motion to bring it back in front of the council. But now I couldn't get answered if, uh, the truck is here, if the truck was ordered or if it's sitting over on their lot, over in the park. And I'll, I'll just say that this much is that we're spending almost fifty thousand dollars and I didn't, I don't see, I see a need to competitive bid this out. We're not leasing something. I think it should be competitively bid out. And that's why I wanted to bring it up and bring it back up for discussion in front of the council. Not saying that, you know, we're, we're gonna not pay our bills. I just think that we should look at a more utilitarian, uh, vehicle for that kind of operation on the, uh, beach. Thank you.
Okay, I know the chief is here. And Chief, would you please come down and explain or answer the questions in concern here about this vehicle?
Double goal, Michigan City Fire. Um, what are your concerns and questions? Specifically, what's your concern?
Get a truck.
Why didn't you guys get a truck? To use more, have more space and a better platform in the sand?
We decided the Jeep was the best avenue to go. We want something light and able to go on the sand, much better than the old pickup truck that we had or that the park department had. Uh, it's a very light vehicle that carries four people, that's all we need to carry. It's a, like you said, a four-door vehicle. It does have a bed on it that we can carry all the equipment that we need to carry. We want to keep it as light as possible. You can actually also get the modifications that we're looking for. The suspension modifications on it to have bigger tires on it. And, uh, it will still be under warranty, they offer that.
Oh, you're gonna get, you're gonna do more modifications to it?
It's factory modifications at the dealer. It's, it's slight modifications to get a, a better sized tire that'll go on the sand.
Yeah, I don't buy that because I got one and you can put bigger tires on it from, with the factory suspension and all that.
Not the size that we wanted to. If you don't know the size of tire that I'm talking about, then you probably can't make that statement.
Uh, what are you talking about?
The chief, uh, my deputy chief who was in charge of it. I believe they were thirty, I don't know what they were, honestly, I'm not gonna make assumptions.
Okay.
He was in charge of it.
Okay.
It's exactly what we were looking for, other, I don't wanna say departments, but other, we've seen them, we did some research online. That's what they can modify the easiest, if that makes sense.
They sell kits for everything, chief.
But if you want a factory warranty, you have, we, we decided to go with the Jeep.
Understand that.
For durability, it's durability, it's, it's light, it's maneuverable, it's got a shorter wheelbase than a pickup. It's just what we need.
It's just what you need.
Yes, sir.
Uh, fifty thousand dollars.
That's with the modifications, I believe. So yes, it, base price, I believe it was around thirty-seven. And I think it was about ten thousand dollars modifications. I'm not a hundred percent sure there, I'd have to look at the paperwork.
How come that paperwork's not here?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I didn't even know we were talking about it, sir.
Well, I think.
I think in the future.
If you, well, they let me know much for the doubt with an increment for you. If you would have let me know ahead of time, I could have had all that for you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Anything else?
No, sir.
Council President?
Okay, yes, sir.
Anything else?
Go ahead. No, I don't, I don't have any questions. I just wanted you to come up and answer the questions from the Consulman. Consulwoman Tillman? Pardon? Yeah, I mean, if, if we want to eliminate this from this bill, then I guess we have to make a motion and the council has to pay on it.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the claims as read, one hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars eighty-four cents.
There's been a motion made to accept the claims. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's been a motion and a second to accept the claims. Miss Clerk, on the roll call, please.
Miss Vegas?
Aye.
Paul Prespolinski?
Nay.
Tracy Tillman?
Aye.
Brian Dabney?
Aye.
Michael Mack?
Aye.
Miss Deitch?
Aye.
Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
That's seven in favor and one opposed.
Thank you, Miss Clerk. Moving on.
Point of order. We didn't do the approval of the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I, I have a, I have a correction. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Uh, so there was something mentioned in the minutes where the T-Rex was purchased last year for one point three million dollars. And in fact, it was purchased in two thousand and fifteen. So it's probably just a typo or just a, you know, misunderstanding of what was said. But it, it's two hundred, it's two thousand and fifteen, not last year.
So I, I move that, um, with the, uh, the updated correction that we accept the minutes.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Sub second.
Consulman Mack makes a second. Madam Clerk, on the roll call, please.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Miss Vegas?
Aye.
Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
Miss Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Miss Deitch?
Aye.
And Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
That's eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, the minutes are taken care of. We took care of the claims docket. Reports from boards and commissions? And reports from boards and commissions?
Uh, Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, I'm a fire merit commissioner. Uh, just wanna report that we now have a twenty-six applications for the Michigan City Fire Department. We've extended our application deadline to May thirty-first due to the, uh, job fair they're having tomorrow. Blue chip, I have a couple people concerned about that. So that's what we done. The more the merrier we can get in, the more we can get processed. Now, we had our election of officers and ass, Commissioner Michael Nylav is our president. Uh, Commissioner Fred Adrian is our vice president. And, uh, Commissioner Doug Beege is our secretary treasurer and I'm a member. And Mr. Greg Deutcher is a member. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kalavich. Reports for special or select committees? Any reports of special or select committees? Having none, reports from the mayor or other officers and departments? Chief Legault?
Good evening, uh, Chief Legault, Michigan City Fire Department. Let me get my glasses on, sorry. I'm gonna go over our call, our, uh, car, call volume for the, uh, last month, we had three hundred ninety-one calls, ten of them were fire, uh, which include structure fire, mobile property, natural vegetation, and outside rubbish fire. We had two hundred ninety-seven rescue and emergency medical service calls, which included medical rescue calls, medical assist, emergency medical service incident, extrication rescue, and water or ice related rescue. We had ten hazardous condition calls, which included combustible, flammable spills and leaks, chemical release, reaction or toxic condition, electrical wiring and equipment problem. We had twelve service calls, which would include person in distress, animal problem or rescue, public service assistance, unauthorized burning. Fifty-two good intent calls, uh, which included like a dispatched and canceled en route call, wrong location or emergency found, uh, steam or other gas mistaken for smoke. We had six false alarm, false calls, malicious, mischievous, false alarm, system or detector malfunction, unintentional system detector operation. We had four special incident calls, which included, the special incident calls, uh, were two unknown medical problem. One person passed out in the vehicle, no vehicle or person was found, and one medical assist call. There was seven Narcan calls last month. And then the council, I don't believe who it was, but they asked me to do a graph on the Narcan calls.
Yeah.
Uh, was that you, Consulman? Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I don't know if this, were you guys given all this information that I s-? Okay. So, and we started this in November of twenty twenty-two with the Narcan calls. There was three of them in November, twenty twenty-two, nine of them December of twenty twenty-two, four Narcan calls in January of twenty twenty-three, six in February, seven in March, and then seven again this month. So we spiked out at nine calls. The lowest call was three. So that gives you an idea. So to me, the average, I didn't do an, an actual average, but it looks like probably six, five to six per month.
Okay, just, uh, who did you, uh, submit that to? Did you submit that to the clerk's office? Because I didn't, I didn't, I haven't gotten a copy of it. I don't know.
It was late in the day, so they probably didn't have a chance to give it to you, maybe.
You mean today?
Yes.
I didn't get it, I didn't get a copy of it.
It's probably my fault.
Council members, did everybody get a copy of it?
Electronic copy.
Look, that was a last-minute email.
It was, yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't.
It was later in the morning, maybe late afternoon, I don't remember.
Okay, all right.
So that's that. And then I stated at the last council meeting I was at that I have my truck committee come and speak. This will be Captain Joe Zerbs, he's the head of the truck committee. So he has, did you get this, Consulman? Okay. I'm gonna let him speak and I'll stand up here and answer any questions.
Evening, Council. Uh, as Chief Legault said, I'm Captain Joe Zerbus, uh, from Michigan City Fire Department. Uh, one of my other committee members put together this, uh, presentation that, uh, was emailed out to you guys. Uh, what we're looking at doing is replacing the T-Rex, which is quite unreliable. It was down for service again today. So most of y'all know this, uh, it was correct, uh, twenty fifteen, which is what I'm assuming she got from the, uh, email earlier. But our current status of our trucks, we have a twenty eighteen for our engine one, a two thousand and seven for engine two, which is being replaced this year with that twenty twenty-three that's on order. Uh, then the twenty nineteen is engine three, twenty thirteen is a Pierce. Uh, that's gonna be looked at to be replaced in twenty twenty-eight. Um, and then we do have the Rosenbauer T-Rex, which is the unreliable. Our backup vehicles currently is a nineteen ninety-five Pierce hundred-foot aerial. And then, uh, we have the other twin two thousand and seven Pierce engine. That is our other backup vehicle. And then, uh, the Quint, which is a nineteen ninety-nine, it's a seventy-five foot aerial, which used to be engine two, and it is not currently roadworthy. Uh, we can't really even deem it to have as a backup truck right now. This year, we're looking at, uh, having engine four looked at for doing, uh, life expectancy inspection. Because where it's at is life, uh, that's what deemed the ninety-nine Pierce not to be roadworthy any longer. Uh, they go through the pump, they go through everything, and they tell us what the issues are, what can potentially go wrong in a short period of time. Okay? So engine four will be going, undergoing that soon. But with a two-to-three-year build time, and that time is climbing all the time. Uh, instead of looking at doing engine four right now, we're looking at doing the tower. Because the T-Rex, like as we just said, is not reliable. So, uh, I'm sorry, I get back on my track here. Um, the, the pricing keeps going up. There was a thirteen percent increase on these trucks last year. When the T-Rex was purchased at the one point two or five million, you can do the math by what, a thirteen percent increase. Plus on top of it right now, you're looking Plus on top of it right now, you're looking in twenty twenty-seven, there's another increase because they're coming out with new emissions. So that is going to add almost a hundred grand just on the base because of the new emissions that are coming out. So, uh, our committee did narrow it down to one truck, which in the email that you had gotten, it showed a picture of, uh, mid-mound aerial, has a lower center of gravity, it drives more like a pump. It can take our smaller areas better than what the T-Rex can do, or even the old ladder truck. So, um, being with Pierce for how many years, they've been tried and true. They've served this community very, very well. We obviously went to somebody else before, and look where we stand with it. All three of those trucks have issues constantly. There's not a fire truck that doesn't have some sort of issue because it is a custom-built piece of equipment. It's not built by a robot. Man, a man builds that truck from beginning to end, and there are small issues with every one, but not like what we've had with Rosenbauer. And Sentinel, their service is horrible compared to, uh, McQueen, which has been our dealer for a very long time with Pierce. I used to maintain these trucks. If we had a question, McQueen was there to answer questions right now, or to have somebody to you. So we want to go back to what we know is tried and true. Stick with the Pierce. They've been awesome trucks thus far. So, again, uh, to summarize, uh, we, we need to kind of take advantage of getting an aerial sooner than later. The price increases are just unbelievable. Uh, and then with the already additional hundred thousand, we just lost the chance to actually uh, not have to pay that because they had so many slots set. If we could have presented this sooner, or if we would have known this a little sooner, they just lost with FDIC last week. They just lost all their slots for building new aerials. And we could have got into one of those that just tacked on their hundred thousand to us for purchasing a truck. So, um, if anybody has any questions, feel free. You guys have my email address, too. You can contact me. The, my committee will, it's, will answer whatever questions. Anybody wants to come out, talk to us about stuff, feel free, anytime.
Uh, thank you, Captain. I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, as far as the aerial that we're gonna need sometime soon, when would you say we have to start getting into the process of, you know, ordering, financing, you know, we looking at six months, eight months?
We're in, we're, we're talking with Pierce right now to start everything up. Cause like I said, we were trying to present or hopefully get one going before they added these new emissions. But we missed that. Two weeks ago, they had fifty-eight slots for aerials. I talked to them one day. They have zero. So there's fifty-eight aerials that have been ordered in two weeks by departments through this country. So, and then with the build time, we're already in twenty twenty-three. Build time is two to four years. On, or two to three, yes, I'm thinking G. It's two to three years, uh, to build them. And that depends on how their stuff and supplies go and everything. So you're already pushing out to twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six. So we really need to start getting this going immediately.
And the cost of what we're, uh, thinking about purchasing?
The chief got that. He's the only one that, uh, had gotten that letter on what the cost is going to burn, looking like at this point in time. So I'll let the chief speak on that.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Paul Preswalinsky has a question for you.
Yes, sir.
No, I don't have, a, a question for the, uh, the committee. I, I want to have a, uh, I want to discontinue the discussion and move to the regular line of business. I'm gonna schedule a workshop on this matter because I think that there's so much data out here. You can't even cover it in, uh, a half an hour. And to build up the history, because I've been following this for a couple of years now, and building up the history of where we're at. And here's, here's what I will say. It's an important piece of equipment, but as you heard, we already missed those slots. It'll take at least two years to build it. So we need to, the finance committee needs to sit down and analyze this and come up with a recommendation. Thank you. So I moved, asked, uh, Chair to, uh, move on to, uh, the, any kind of discussion and move on the agenda and, uh, schedule a workshop.
Okay, but I would just like to get a, uh, answer to the question and what the approximate cost would be for a, uh, vehicle like that?
Just, uh, he's, they roughly start at two point three million.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, we will move on to the, thank you, gentlemen. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Okay, we will move on to the, uh, agenda? All right. Got that taken, Joe? Pardon? Uh, no. Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, are there any petitions before us this evening?
No, there are no petitions this evening.
Communications, and if you would, Madam Clerk, could you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, correspondence was received in the clerk's office on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-three from Attorney Harris regarding updates concerning the NIPSCO rate increase matter. And in accordance to ordinance number four, five, three, eight, the clerk's office received an incident report from Shaw and Smith Street Department regarding an accident that occurred on April eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you. And to comment on that, uh, incident that happened, I know that I got a copy of the incident report. I mean, I know the other council members did. I couldn't read it, so I did call Sean to, uh, send a, or to write up a new incident report so it could be, uh, legible and we could read it. So I instructed the clerk's office to contact him tomorrow and ask him for a copy of that so we can see exactly what, what happened there. Okay, uh, Madam Clerk? Our first resolution before us this evening?
A resolution by title only approving the amendment to the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four union contract between the City of Michigan City Firefighters Local Number Four, Seven, Five, and committing to funding the additional monies necessary for the amendment to the contract. And this is introduced by Sean Fitzpatrick, Don Preswalinsky, and Paul Preswalinsky.
And do the authors have anything that they would like to add at this time? Councilman Paul Preswalinsky?
Um, after, uh, several, uh, sessions and, uh, executive sessions that we, uh, came to an agreement, and I think it's a very fair agreement on the, uh, boosting their, boosting the salary for police and fire. I'll just say, and, and I'll address both the issues at this moment. And the, uh, we're, we're gonna increase the, uh, base pay and roll it into the base. And I think that the, uh, FOP's already approved this contract and, uh, and so did the, uh, uh, local firefighters, four seventy-five, in its, uh, form that we approved at our negotiating meetings. And I would just hope that we would move forward and, uh, pass the resolution tonight.
Thank you, Council, Councilman. I would like to make a, uh, comment on this. Uh, I know that the chair was supposed to sit down to get a comment on anything, but yeah, since, uh, President's not here and we, I'm the assistant or vice president anyway, we'll just do it like this, is that I want to thank the FOP, and I want to thank the firefighters and the labor negotiating team, which consists of myself, Councilman Paul Preswalinsky, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick, and Councilwoman Tracy Tillman uh, there that evening, uh, that sat in and had some input. But, and then what this re- result revolves around is the lit money that we had, uh, voted in that tax, and then we had received, or we're gonna receive over a twelve-month period, four point three million dollars. And we were able to sit down with the FOP and the Fire Department and, uh, have a very congenial, uh, discussion and came up with the funding mechanisms and the amounts of what, uh, we were gonna give, uh, to each department. And I'm very glad that we were able to do that. I know that some folks in the community were being, uh, I guess, over anxious that we needed to get this done right away. But I have to say that the, uh, committee knew what we were doing and why it took the time it took to get this done. So I just want to thank the committee for all their professionalism. And I want to thank the FOP and the firefighters for their professionalism and, uh, getting this done. And I believe that the, uh, the vote for both the FOP and for the, uh, local four seventy-five was overwhelming in acceptance of, uh, the agreement in the funding that we had, uh, approved. So with that being said, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this resolution?
Hi, I'm Mary Lynn Wall. I'm Assistant Controller, City of Michigan City. My glasses on. I just wanted, just a comment, um, just to make sure everybody realizes that Yvonne did a tremendous amount of time researching both police and fire salaries, certifications, longevity, and other pay items for all the surrounding areas. It became evident that the Michigan City Fire Department had about one of the lowest, um, probationary pay in the area and not receiving first-class status until eight years seemed very unreasonable. We have corrected these issues, and now we are one of the highest in probationary pay. And in twenty twenty-four, this level will, will receive an additional fourteen percent increase. For police and fire, Michigan City has one of the most generous longevity programs in the area, probably one of the highest in the state. Michiwaka does not pay longevity at all. In twenty twenty-four, the annual longevity pay added to a firefighter with over twenty years will be thirteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Maximum longevity after twenty-five years will be sixteen thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. In comparison, all the other city employees receive four hundred and fifty dollars every three years, maxing out at thirty-six hundred dollars. For police and fire, longevity is a significant amount added to their paycheck every pay and should be used as a retention tool. I know new hires are looking mainly at their current pay. However, if we want them to stay in Michigan City, we need to emphasize, emphasize the very generous longevity pay. But we are now planning for the twenty twenty-four budget. We need to make sure we are fair to all of our city employees with respect to both twenty twenty-four increases and longevity pay.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Let me finish with the, uh, public. Anyone else from the public who should speak on this resolution? Anyone else from the public who should speak on this resolution? Having none, Councilman Preswalinsky?
Um, what, what the comments that were made by, uh, Mary Lynn, that, uh, in this packet, which I brought up at our exec session, there, we are, and we brought it up at several meetings, and I still don't see it, is there supposed to be a, uh, retain, not a retention, but a contract, a, uh, ordinance brought to us for a, uh, uh, not a retention agreement for the probies before they even go to the academy because we also had concerns about firemen being approached already at the academy to be hired out of the academy. And I think it's fair for the city to stop this bleeding, and this thing needs to be done ASAP. If we have to have a special meeting, then so be it before these guys get sworn in. Because that was the problem in Michigan City, that people would come here and work for two years and then leave, and not so much in the Fire Department, but they did have a few guys leave. But they would go to other departments. And I got it from the, uh, rank and file that we were known as the training facility in northern Indiana. And I don't think that we need to be, and that's the reason I'm bringing this up, that that needs to be done. Now, if the city attorney can't do it, then I guess that we'll have to have our legal staff for the council do it. But it needs to be done, and it needs to be done before they get sworn in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other counsel?
I was gonna bring that up as well, that, uh, a lot of places that train people, like for a CDL license, et cetera, you have a little contract, an employment contract, that if you leave before a certain number of years, you owe a prorated amount back to that. And I thought I heard the number that thirty thousand dollars is what it costs to train a police officer. So they would be on a hook for that unless they stayed a certain number of years. So I think that's definitely a good, uh, like an employment contract to add. Maybe not part of this contract, but a, a, an additional thing when they sign to go get trained, that's what it's gonna do. And I don't even think it's beyond the, the scope to do bonuses. So the bonuses that are gonna come up in the ordinance, uh, perhaps you need to stay X number of years once you get the bonus, otherwise you owe as part of it back.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments by council members? Uh, I would just like to make a comment that tomorrow I will call the, uh, city attorney, cause I know that she was, she was supposed to be working on that and get it out to the council. She just may not have it done yet. But I, but I would like to get that done and on the table.
Point of order, uh.
Point of order.
Yes.
Um, I believe that.
Councilwoman Tillman?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I do believe that, um, the city attorney, um, already have a draft prepared. That was, so.
Right, we're just waiting for the final copy to come out. Right. Okay, that's the way I understood, too, when we, we had our meeting. Yeah, thank you. Okay, is, uh, any other discussion? Having none? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second. There's been a motion by Councilwoman Tillman and a second by Councilman Preswalinsky on the resolution for the vote. Madam Clerk, on the roll call?
Paul Preswalinsky?
Aye.
Tracy Tillman?
Aye.
Brian Dabney?
Aye.
Michael Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Don Preswalinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
And Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our second resolution by title only?
A resolution by title only approving the second amendment to the twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-four union contract between the city and the Michigan City Fraternal Order of Police, Dunes Lodge Number Seventy-Five, and committing to funding the additional monies necessary for the second amendment to the contract. And this is introduced by Sean Fitzpatrick, Don Preswalinsky, and Paul Preswalinsky.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Councilman Paul Preswalinsky?
I, I just wanted, uh, you know, basically it's the same, uh, comments as on the first resolution, but I, I would like to say that, um, the Labor Negotiating Committee, uh, put in a lot of time, a lot of- the Labor Negotiating Committee put in a lot of time, a lot of thought, a lot of discussion into what we're doing. And last year, we had multiple, multiple meetings. And I believe that from my standpoint concerning police and fire, that I made a statement. And that was that I believe in security and safety and stopping the bleeding. And I think that we have achieved it by both parties agreeing to this, to these contracts. I think it's good for the city and it'll take us probably a year to get these probies on the street because they have a year of field training. But after that, we're going to be moving forward and I believe that it's going to be a big sigh of relief and it won't solve all our problems. But it's definitely we're going to solve our manning issue. And now we're giving the tools to the departments. So now it's up to them to do the recruiting and hiring. Thank you.
Yeah, the only comment I'd like to make is I'd like to thank the Controller's Office. I should have did it on the first resolution and I apologize, Mary Lynn, when you got up there. But no, the work that goes on behind the scenes to get the financing and to figure out all the numbers that are involved with this is a lot of work. And and all the committee members greatly, greatly appreciated. So thank you very much, Yvonne, Mary Lynn, Kamiko. Thank you. Okay. And just as Councilman Paul Prisbalinsky said, we have now given the tools. We've given the police department the best equipment that I know possible to run their department. We have listened to them. We have given them the financing to go out and recruit officers. And, you know, we are here for public safety and the council has done its part. And it's up to the department heads to go out and shore up their departments and make them the very best that they can do. Not to say that we're not going to help with anything, but I believe everyone will agree that the financing is there now to bring in firemen, to bring in police officers and do what's necessary to make Michigan City safe. Are there any public comments? Any public comments on this resolution?
Wayne Perry, Mayor of Michigan City, I will make a comment about the contract, the employment contract that you discussed earlier. Shortly after your April meeting, I asked, I had a conversation with the controller and our legal corporate attorney, Ms. LaPage Stalbrink about that. And Ms. Stalbrink told me that she had drafted in 2019 employment contracts that were requested by you, Councilman Don Prisbalinsky. And she gave me a copy. I reviewed it. It's a solid document. But she said that after she drafted them, you withdrew your sponsorship. Now, if Councilman Paul Prisbalinsky is willing to act as a sponsor on those contracts, then you can have them tomorrow morning. If is Amber going to be back? Is Amber going to be? Yeah, they're they're ready for you if you're ready to sponsor. Thank you.
May I respond?
I could respond. If that's the case, then it's the city attorney. The city attorney could have called me and said, Councilman Prisbalinsky, if you want to come in and we'll use the same contract. What in 2019, when Chief Swestec was here? Okay, let me finish my comment. In 2019, when Chief Swestec was here, we were looking at that. And it was told to me by the council attorney at the time. And I think Amber LaPage agreed that it would be hard to enforce that type of contract then. Now it seems like there is not an issue with trying to enforce that contract, but it's a good idea. So if or if the city attorney Amber LaPage wants to contact me and sit down with me, I would be born and happy. And if Councilman Paul Prisbalinsky or any other council members want to sit down. Excuse me. I should have turned off my electrical device. Anyway, anyway, yeah, I mean, if any other council members want to, you know, get involved with this, that's fine. But that's where I stand with this. I never knew it. So, you know, if people would, I guess, communicate and tell council members what's going on, then I'd be more than happy to sit down and talk to her. Councilman Dabney, go ahead.
Yeah, real quick, as I recall, I think we were having a discussion whether or not to try to put it in the actual contract or have it as a separate ordinance. I do remember that conversation. I'm not sure where it went from there, but we were talking about whether or not to try to put it in an actual contract or a separate order. I can't remember.
Okay.
I think that's where we were at, why that may have.
Yeah, but either way, it's back on the plate again and, you know, just bring it up.
And that'll be
Bring it in front of the council and have a workshop or what have you and we'll, you know, take a look at it. Councilman Paul Prisbalinsky.
Well, I'm gonna state that I think that what the president brought up is a key issue here is communication. Because I never saw that draft from 2019. As a matter of fact, I had a I respectfully disagree with your comments about the whole idea of the process because as we left the meeting last time, I brought the concern up. And I had no communication with the city attorney's office. So and and also, Mr. Mayor, you know, if you wanted to, if you, if that was an issue with you, you could have contacted either one of us before the meeting tonight. So I think that, you know, as usual, you're trying to mess with the Prisbalinsky brothers. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments from the council? We already
Motion to accept.
Okay. So is there is there a motion? Councilwoman Tillman made a motion to approve.
Yes.
Councilman Paul Prisbalinsky seconded. Madam Clerk, on the vote.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prisbalinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prisbalinsky?
Aye.
It's eight in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our third resolution before us this evening by title only?
A resolution by title only approving the use of remaining funding from additional appropriation ordinance number 4671 to be used to fund amendment to the city's on-call engineer contract with Hassan Associates. And this is introduced by Ms. Delia Zagas.
And does the author have anything she'd like to add?
Yes, this is a little bit complex, but basically what happened is that the engineer that is the most familiar with all of our projects has left Primera. And therefore, we want to continue the projects of Michigan City as best we can. We have money budgeted for an engineer. We just need to move it from the Primera contract, which we're going to stop and then, you know, pay what we owe them and then transfer the contract to Hassan Associates. We have 137,952 approximately left. And I say approximately because there might be an invoice that's still due to Primera. And we want to move this money to the contract with Haas. Again, it's on-call. So it's not like they're getting the money. They're going to get the money as they are working through the projects that we need done. We desperately need done. And because $137,000, et cetera, is not, you know, 190, we have money from Seated. So we have some additional funds from Seated that were already line itemed for engineering that we can use to make up the difference so that we do have the amount for the contract. So I hope I didn't mess this up. I don't know if the controller or Mr. Haas has anything to add. But it's basically moving money that we had with Primera to Haas so that we can continue to have on-call engineering for the city.
Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Any council members wish to speak on this resolution? Councilwoman Deitch?
I do have a question. I know that we budgeted 90 something thousand dollars for a part-time engineer. Have we tried to increase the salary to like 130,000 and post it? Because I know we didn't get hits for part-time and I know she changed the type, the changed it to say full-time, but the salary never increased. Have we tried to do that? And then my second question is with the contract. So we won't have any obligations for from Primera once we stop that contract. Is it just one of those contracts that, because they have other engineers? But is it a contract that is strictly specific to to Brad Minnick, to Mr. Minnick? And are we going to be obligated to pay anything to them? Or will they be on-call for something else? I guess I'm trying to understand the relationship of that contract. So we're breaking the contract or do we have a clause in there that we can get out of the contract if he's gone? Because that's important. Administration, whoever can answer it?
Yvonne Hoff, Master City Controller. Yes, we do have an out clause in the Primera contract. And the contract was written that Brad Minnick, an engineer for Primera, would be doing these projects for the city. So since Brad left Primera, and we do have an out clause. So the only thing we would owe Primera would be anything we have not paid for up until, I believe, Brad left, like the first week of April. So we might have another invoice coming from Primera just through the term that Brad was there. Then we will be canceling that contract with them.
And the first question was, have we posted outside of the part-time position? Have we tried to increase the salary to get a full-time engineer or not? Or is that something we're not going to look at in the future budget?
I'm not sure. But I believe the intention of the administration is to increase that salary in the next budget and try to get a full-time engineer in.
Michigan City Mayor Duane Perry, as I recall, we did converse with Tanisha Clark, Georgia, personal director on this. She did post it. There was a great amount, great amount of concern expressed by Nicky because of Brad's depth of knowledge about the double track. They're moving from the track now into the station block. And they were really concerned that the schedule would be severely impacted if we change gears right now and bring in a different engineer with absolutely no knowledge of the project. So that's why we're asking for this. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Okay, Councilman Paul Prisbalinsky?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. One is that are we going to have money left over to have continual? How much money are we talking about even having left over for engineering services? Are we going to look at allocate more, more money in the near future? If you only have 130 left over, are we going to have to? Are we going to have to allocate, you know, more money coming into the summer with this? With, you know, I don't have a problem using Hassan Associates by no means. And because they're local, they've done excellent work for the city. And I just want to know, how do you foresee this moving forward? Do you see us? Is there going to be enough money to cover Haas's services with Brad involved and any money that's left over? That's what I'm getting at. Are we going to come back to us at the next meeting and say, you know, which? I just want to know where we're at, you know, in the process.
The scope of this agreement is with Hassan Associates. Brad is the key player here. He is not only going to take care of double track, which is the highest priority project. He's going to address community crossings. And Hassan Associates as a firm will also lend the support needed by the sanitary district and the redevelopment commission. So this, this is an all-service contract that we're relying on Haas and Associates for. Am I stating that correctly, Tim? Okay, thank you.
Okay, one other question. Since you brought up the redevelopment commission, are they going to have any skin in this game for engineering services?
We're still negotiating it.
Okay.
Councilwoman Zagas?
Oh, yes. Councilon Prisbalinsky, there's still 90,000 seated dollars that are going to cover besides the 137. So that is available and it was already allocated for engineering services. So I'm just saying like it's going to be more than 137,000. It will be up to at least 190.
Thank you.
And a question for Yvonne, City Controller. We're talking about this, there may be an outstanding invoice for April from Primera that would need to be subtracted from this amount of 137,000. Do we know there's a bill coming in? Do we have an approximation of how much the bill might be or we're just saying there may be a bill coming in? Because if there's a bill coming in, then that reduces that total of 137 down to, you know, how much?
I have not received anything from Primera. I just know Brad left, I believe, the first week of April. So he may have done work for one or two days for them. So there may be a small invoice.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions from council members? Is there a motion?
I saw move.
Second? Councilman Simmons?
Yeah.
Motion made by Councilman Paul Prisbalinsky and seconded by Councilman Gene Simmons. Madam Clerk, on the vote.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prisbalinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prisbalinsky?
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
That is eight in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we are now on to ordinances and our first ordinance. Madam Clerk, by title only?
Madam Clerk, by title only.
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Public Safety Local Income Tax Lit Fund to fund amendment, uh, amendments to both police and fire union contracts. And this is introduced by Sean Fitzpatrick, Don Preswalinski, and Paul Preswalinski.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to comment on at this time?
Councilman Paul Priswalinski, just as, uh, same, uh, comments earlier that this has been approved and, uh, by both unions. And, uh, we need to move forward on it. And it's good for us, it's good for them. And, uh, I wanted to thank, uh, Tracy Tillman for, uh, attending that session. I, 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 I know that you enjoyed yourself at, at that session, okay? And, uh, also Brian Dabney, uh, attended some of our sessions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And I would just like to add that what this ordinance here does is, uh, approves the amounts that were negotiated upon and agreed upon between the city and the firefighters and the FOP. And that's what that, this is what is dealing with this ordinance. All right, uh, anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, any further, uh, council comments? Any further council comments? This ordinance will be held over for a second meeting at our next meeting. Madam Clerk, our next ordinance on first reading by title only.
An ordinance on first reading by title only amending ordinance number four, six, five, four to increase the base salaries for the position of probationary firefighter and firefighter in the Fire Department of the City of Michigan City for the calendar year twenty twenty-three and also to provide members of the Fire Department with a one-time bonus for twenty twenty-three. And this is introduced by Sean Fitzpatrick, Don Preswalinski, and Paul Preswalinski.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, any council comments on this ordinance? Any council comments? This ordinance will be held over for a second reading at our next council meeting. Madam Clerk, our next ordinance on first reading by title only.
An ordinance on first reading by title only amending ordinance number four, six, five, three to increase the salaries for the positions of probationary patrolmen and probation, uh, oh, I'm sorry, patrolmen and patrolmen in the Police Department of the City of Michigan City for the calendar year twenty twenty-three and also to provide members of the Police Department with a one-time bonus for twenty twenty-three. And this is introduced by Sean Fitzpatrick, Don Preswalinski, and Paul Preswalinski.
And do the au- authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Councilman Paul Priswalinski?
I, I would just want to say that, um, I, I, uh, with the lit text that, you know, um, it was sold on the idea of two premises, retention and recruitment and better pay for our officers. And we, we s- we spent two million dollars on, on other things. And I, I feel remiss about that. And I want to apologize to the police and firemen that it didn't get done sooner. And I believe you're a valuable asset. All of our workers are, are valuable assets. And I don't mean that in an impersonal way. I mean that with all sincerity in, in, uh, because at one time I wanted to be a fireman. And, uh, my favorite color is red. And I work in steelmaking, which is a lot of fire, baby, all right? And a lot of heat, I wound up there. So anyway, I'm, I'm very glad that we got this done. And, uh, we'll keep mov- me moving forward, you know? Keep moving forward. Thank you.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Any council members wish to comment? Any council members wish to comment? Okay, having none, this ordinance will be held over for a second meeting at our next council meeting. And Madam Clerk, our next ordinance on first reading by title only.
An ordinance on first reading by title only amending ordinance number four, six, five, zero commonly known as the twenty twenty-three salary ordinance to provide the police chiefs and the fire chiefs the same one-time bo- bonus in twenty twenty-three as their respective union. And this is introduced by Sean Fitzpatrick.
And the author is not here to comment on it this evening, so we'll move right on to public comment. So anyone here from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone here from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, any council members? Any council members wish to speak on this ordinance? Any council members wish to speak on it? Having none, this ordinance will be held over for a second meeting at our next council meeting. Madam Clerk, if you would add, Councilman Paul Priswalinski as a co-sponsor for the ordinance, please. And Madam Clerk, our next ordinance on first reading by title only.
An ordinance on first reading by title only amending ordinance number four, six, five, zero commonly known as the twenty twenty-three salary ordinance to create the position of part-time animal control officers. And this is introduced by Don Preswalinski.
And, uh, having spent some time with, uh, Chief Cooney and, uh, Jackie, the, uh, animal control officer, and hearing some of the concerns that they had there with Manning that there is a need for two to three part-time individuals to be added, uh, to the Animal Control Department. And I believe that the pay is going to amount to be, I don't know, eighteen dollars and fifty cents an hour, some give or take a few, uh, few pennies there. And, uh, I think they will be on like a on-call base as needed basis. And Chief Cooney, uh, invited him here this evening to, uh, comment on this and answer any questions that any council members may have. So, uh, Chief, if you would, please, explain the position of the department and the, uh, great need.
Uh, good evening. David Cooney, Chief of Services with the Michigan City Police Department. I've been speaking with Director Euler as well as, uh, Personnel Director George on adding this position. The, the situation came up and, and it is, part of it is a scheduling issue is that in the contract for our animal control officers, it states that their schedule is Monday through Friday. Um, and we have had a full kennel since November. Um, we have a court case that encompasses seven of the kennels that we have. And they have to be taken care of on the weekends. They have to be walked, they have to be fed twice a day. And in order to do that for November through now, we've had to basically put one of the animal control officers on a weekend rotation. Every other weekend they were having to come in and clean the kennels. The problem with that is we're paying overtime for them to do that. Um, we tried adjusting their schedule to overlap the weekends by giving them a Monday off or Friday off. And based on their contract, we weren't able to do that. The union is aware that they're going to be looking into maybe making that adjustment to make flexibility in the schedule a little easier. Um, in the meantime, um, we only have one active animal control officer. Director Euler's on, um, sick leave. Uh, our other animal control officer Fletcher, uh, unfortunately resigned recently. Um, when that, our full-time animal control officer is not available because we encompass them, I have to basically have either volunteers, which are limited unfortunately, or if no volunteers are available, I have to pay officers to go in and clean the kennels at overtime rate. So I think overall, there's enough work to be done, especially with these dogs that are still coming in and out, you know, continuously, um, that the need is there to have the extra personnel.
Any questions for the chief? Councilman Paul Priswalinski?
Um, Chief Cooney, you talk about the, uh, their schedule and, uh, I, I re- recall, um, when I was on the council before that, we had an issue with, uh, we, we hired another, uh, person so they could work weekends. I mean, what, I don't understand, is that a contractual issue?
Correct, yeah. So I spoke with, uh, Attorney LaPage and she had stated that until that's amended, we cannot assign someone just to weekends. Um, the part-time personnel, however, we can set any days that we may need.
Okay.
Which is more flexibility for us.
All right, well, I, I'm getting to the point about having somebody. When, when we hired somebody before, it was so we'd have coverage on the weekends because we had a lot of complaints about nobody there on the weekend. We need to, at some point revisit that. And if we need more money, we, we need to deal with it because Don and I, uh, or excuse me, Councilman Don Preswalinski and I, you know, met with you guys and they ha- we have, they got some issues that need to be resolved. Correct. And we need to move forward on that. The kennel, the, all that stuff. So anyway, I, I wanted to be ans- uh, added as a co-sponsor to this, please. Thanks, Chief.
Yes, sir.
And I would like to be added too.
Okay, other, any other, uh, questions for the chief? Chief, I, I do have a question. So I'm hoping that by having a part-time individual coming there, that that's going to reduce overtime for the Police Department? And we can use those officers elsewhere besides taking care of the animals at the animal control?
Yes, sir.
That, that's our main obje- one of our main objectives here?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And when it can, and when it comes time to have a police officer working overtime, what is, uh, the hourly rate for overtime? You got any idea? I mean, depend, just say, just say, I don't, just say, uh, bottom line.
Forty-five dollars an hour.
Forty-five dollars an hour?
On average, yeah.
Okay, so that right there tells me, you know, you know, the pay difference and the money that we could be saving and, and, you know, possibly this part-time animal control officer, we get involved with the Animal Control Department and become a full-time employee. Right, lines.
That would be great.
Training rounds going on there too.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And I, and, and, you know, I know that there's a lot of volunteers that go down there and work and, and do this, uh, for the city. And it is a big operation, although we may think that animal control is no more than picking up dogs and cats. And it's, it's a whole lot more than that. Uh, I had a chance to go down to the kennel and see firsthand what goes on down there. And I, I can tell my colleagues on the council here, if you haven't been there yet, you know, take the opportunity to, I have Chief Cooney go down there and show you what the operation's about and why the need is there and why the need is also going to be there to rebuild these kennels when that time comes around also. Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Yep. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this?
Ernie Hallahan, three oh two Gladys Street. It's my understanding they're down to one right now? And one resigned?
Mm-hmm.
Are they going to replace the one that resigned plus hire a part-time one?
Yes.
Okay, because they definitely need.
Yep, that's what we're trying to do, Mr. Hallahan, is get everything, get up, get the personnel strained out there at that department. Yep, we'll get there.
Anthony Stransky, two, two, three, East Bark Row. I have a question. What happened to community service that we used to have? People that were on probation or were tied into the courts came out to the community and they picked up papers or they did things around town? The cemetery cleaned up. What happened to the program?
I don't know. I don't know. I would have to find out. Mayor, Ma- uh, Mayor Perry?
Okay.
Let's get a comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. Resident. Uh, that stopped when COVID came. And the, 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 the prison had a high enough rate that they stopped it. And since then, the, uh, Indiana State Prison here in Michigan City is short correctional officers, the same as everybody else. I've talked to, uh, Superintendent Neal. And once that situation gets better, he's more than willing to send, uh, the lightweights out and help us out. But until it gets better, he's, he says he's not going to do it.
Okay. But then here's my other question. So, um, they don't have to be prisoners. It can be people that are on probation. It doesn't have to be the prisoners. They can work their probation on doing community service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on this? All right, any council comments? Councilman Paul Priswalinski?
Mrs. Stransky, that, that's a very good point. And we need to check in to find out what happened to community service because it's totally a different thing between community service work and when you're using inmates and they got to have a guard and all that transportation, all that stuff. And that's a very good point. I'll, I'm going to look into it. Thank you.
All right, any other comments by, uh, council members?
Thank you. Um, just to, um, add on to that, Miss Stransky, as far as the community service goes, that would be a conversation with the, um, um, adult probation and the juvenile probation's, um, directors and with the prosecutors. So just to say, community service, it has to be court ordered for them to undergo community service. And then also having the manpower and the staffing to, uh, monitor to make sure that these individuals are completing it.
Okay, any other comments from, uh, or questions from council members? Having none, this, uh, ordinance will be held over for our next council meeting. Uh, Madam Clerk, our next ordinance?
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Maintenance Department of the Park and Recreation Fund for replacement of fencing at Patriot Park. And this is introduced by Brian Dabney.
And Councilmember Dabney?
Uh, real quick, I just want to, I'll address this one and, and talk about the next. So I will make a comment on the next. This is going to cover both. Uh, these had come before us before. And we actually tried to pass these, uh, on all three readings in one night. But we didn't have a formal public hearing, so that made it null and void. And it's now come back for us to do again. Um, so that's why we're saying these again. That's what happened when we tried to do all three in one night. Uh, we didn't have the formal public hearing and, and so here we are again with these, um, moving forward. So that's the same comment that applies to the next one as well.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Are there any, anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anybody from the public speak on this ordinance? Having none, any further council comments? No council comments, this ordinance will be held over to our next council meeting. Uh, Madam Clerk, our next ordinance, our last ordinance on, uh, first reading?
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Maintenance Department of the Park and Recreation Fund for repairs at Sunset Grill. And this is also introduced by Brian Dabney.
And does the author have anything else he wants to add besides what he's said already? Okay, anyone from the? Anyone from the, uh, public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public? Wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public speak on this ordinance? Any further discussion by council members? Having none, this ordinance will be held over till our next council meeting. Uh, Madam Clerk? And before we get into this discussion, I would like to take a five-minute recess. All right. We'll call the meeting back to order now. And, uh, Madam Clerk, if you would please, our first ordinance on second reading.
An ordinance, sorry, Paul, Don, an ordinance on second reading by title only. Creating Article 10 in Chapter 22 entitled Rental Inspection Program. And this is introduced by Ms. Dahlia Zegas.
And I'm sure the author has something she'd like to add.
Yes, I'd like to take it off the table, please. I think we should take it off the table.
Okay, there's, uh, not, uh, not a motion, but the author wants to take the, uh, ordinance off the table. Okay, that's, that is a motion. So I need a second. So there's a second by Councilwoman Tillman. Uh, Madam Clerk on the vote, please.
Who is the second?
Pardon?
I see. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay. Um, Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Zegas?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
That's eight in favor and zero opposed.
Okay.
Okay. So now.
And go ahead, Councilwoman Ziegus.
Yes. And, and then now I have to make another motion to amend by substitution because after our workshop, we made some changes and after some more input from other departments in the city. So you guys have a corrected copy in front of you and there's a clean copy available. So I'd like to amend by substitution.
There's been a motion to amend by substitution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mack? Madam Clerk on the vote?
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Zegas?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky?
Nay.
Ms. Tillman?
Nay.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
And Mr. Mack?
Aye.
That's six in favor and two opposed.
Okay.
All right. Uh, if, if, if you would, I would like to, uh, describe some of the changes that were made. I want to remind everybody that this is to protect our tenants. This is to make sure that all living units meet minimum living standards. And most of the landlords will have no trouble with this. This is a way to systematically make sure all properties get covered and not just hit and miss and not just if someone, you know, hits one and the other and then complains and not complain. So we're going to try to do this all at once. So two words at a time, once you get inspected and if you have nothing wrong, it will take literally 15 minutes. And then three years you're good. And then again, no, no fee for the inspection, although we would like to have a $5 fee for registration. And I'll talk about that for a second. So the changes made, uh, so we, we have removed an affirmation. Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Ziegus, if you would, could you, uh, know, or call out the number of the page?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. So that way we can.
So, well, I mean, the October 1st date was already on the other, on the previous version.
The change?
Yeah.
No, no.
Yeah. The, uh, the clerk, the assistant clerk will go make copies and pass them out to anybody in the audience that wants them.
It's also available on my website. So you take a look, but, uh, on page two, the affirmation, whether or not there are delinquent, delinquent real property taxes, assessments or penalties that has been stricken. Because number one, even if we had the information, it's really not that relevant to us and we're not going to do anything with it. So that has been stricken. Um, on page three, if you take a look at the section 22811C, uh, code enforcement had no capacity and no ability to do the following test, the lead hazards or indoor air quality. So those will be stricken. We're going to be looking at electrical systems, plumbing, make sure it works. That's all. We don't want anything deluxe. You know, hot water, heating, ventilation system, bathroom, toilet facilities, doors, windows, stairways. Always functioning smoke detectors. That's it. So that would be like the shortlist of what they're looking for. And again, most landlords, this will be just a no-brainer, a one-time inspection. Three years later, you get to do it again. Um, other changes that we have made, I think at the end here. Um, right. So there is no fee for the inspection. There's no fee for the first reinspection. But after that, you know, there, there is some downside. Uh, so some strategic things here. Uh, we did, I did talk to the fire chief or the fire marshal and we agree, like one of the things brought up at the, at the, uh, workshop was that that registration should be one time, like whether you have smoke detectors or who to call in emergencies or whatever, that should be a combined, you know, registration. So we are going to be working on the logistics of how to get that done. But there's no reason to repeat it if it's that similar. And I was able to, you know, check to see what they asked for and really it's very similar. We would just add to the registration, you know, working smoke detectors, et cetera, where, you know, that they have those. And then, uh, let me see here, what else? Yeah, that's what we, so we struck the, the taxes. We struck the two things for, uh, inspection. And so basically there's another procedural thing, but it's going to be a little bigger uh, to help code enforcement and the, and the planning department to get this done. Right now I am finding out that their process is really very, I don't know. It's not streamlined. Whatever the word opposite of streamlined is, that's what it is. They have different people doing different things on different computers and different programs. And, uh, I am going to be working on something to make that go a little bit better for them. But basically, so this is again, all tenants will have their place inspected in a three-year cycle. And again, we're just looking to make sure that all the houses get hit and not just hit and miss and picking on people or whatever. It's going to be distributed along all the land parts.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Any comments from the public?
I just want to know why you're trying to protect the tenant. Kathy Stransky, two, two, three, Spark Row. He's my friend. I just want to know, you're going to come out and inspect our houses and then we're going to rent them. So then are you going to come out and inspect them again when the tenants leave and they leave us $10,000 worth of damage? Because that's a two-way street.
Thank you.
Patrick Vance, three eighteen Gardena Street. I was just wondering, uh, Ms. Deitch, um, since this was changed, is this still a second reading or is this first reading? Because it was changed. It was not made available to the public prior to this meeting.
Long as the amendment is in writing to the city council, as per our rules, it's still the second reading because it's amended by substitution. It doesn't have to go back. And she did it by substitution, even though there were only minor changes in there. But as long as, um, per our rules that the council receives it in writing, it can be amended by substitution. I don't know if there's anything different. Um, Attorney Snow.
Thank you.
Okay. I, I would, I would just comment on that, that it, it, there is some consideration, I think, for the substantiveness of the amendments. Have the amendments in this one are relatively minor. So I think legally, we would generally defer to the rules of the, of the council.
Hi, my name's Melissa Ortiz. I'm from Portage, Indiana, and I represent the State of Indiana Real Estate Investors. I also.
Did you give your address?
Six five five five, Portage, Indiana.
Yeah, that.
I'm, I also sit on several committees nationwide on affordable housing. I sat on one yesterday that included HUD because I meet federally as well as locally. And, uh, due to rules and regulations of this type and others in the city of Milwaukee, they have just lost 20% of their for affordable housing. Just so you know where this is headed because they're selling. Um, also on section five, one fifty-three F, it's against House Enrolled Act fifteen forty-one. You're interfering with landlord-tenant relationships and that's a state law.
Can you, can you give that rule again? So I can look at it.
Uh, section five, one fifty-three F, where it's saying that housing providers have to provide short-term housing for tenants if their houses need to be fixed. That's against state law. And I would also like to know, um, what the reasoning is that you need to know who, uh, is responsible to the IRS for the, uh, in, in your landlord registration. It's asking who's responsible to the IRS.
It's not true.
That is true. It's right here in your ordinance. It states it in your ordinance under the landlord registration part. The person listed as the responsible.
And what page is that you're looking at?
There are no page numbers on it. It's, uh, right above section twenty-two dash eight one six. And it's, I don't have an updated version. Page eleven. To be the person listed as the responsible party with the Internal Revenue Service. So what, what does that have to do with registering a property? I know you copied and pasted from the South Bend ordinance. And what you don't know is I'm very familiar with that. I worked with the city. So I could tell you exactly what is legal and what is not. Matter of fact, if you are really into what the city's doing, they couldn't enforce this because investors were selling so fast. They just redid their whole ordinance. And I'm sure you don't have an updated copy of that because I just got one.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Bill Sherman, three twenty-five Maple Woods Drive. Um, little different tactic on this. Um, if, if you're looking to do some inspections, uh, I noticed that short-term renters, rentals were not included in this. Um, to, to me, they're almost more important because you've got people coming in on a short-term basis, coming in for a party and not familiar with the building. So it's critical that they have all the safety, um, factors involved there where they're looking for the functioning smoke detectors and, uh, functioning, uh, not over, uh, um, the, overpopulating the building, the occupancy rates. Uh, I know, uh, on Airbnb and whatnot, they list their occupancy rates, but all of a sudden you see twice as many cars there as what's in the, uh, what they've listed. Um, and I know people have done, uh, modifications where they've got, um, beds in the basements.
Mm-hmm.
And so the egress out of there, you know, it, it's, it's important for a safety standpoint, especially if something goes wrong, that, uh, the short-term renters be included in this also. Thank you.
Thank you. Does everybody have a copy of the ordinance now? They want a copy of it?
I'll get you one, honey. I'll bring it.
Yeah. Thanks, Cassie.
Hello, Lorraine Rasmussen Mannion, fourteen oh five Buffalo Street. Um, regarding this ordinance, I have to say I am baffled. The long-term rentals in Michigan City are in short supply. And this ordinance will discourage landlords basing off of what Ms. Ortiz said and the data she provided. Will discourage landlords from wanting to invest and operate this kind of housing in Michigan City. And I know because I'm a landlord in Michigan City. We landlords provide low-income housing to the low-income renter. If there are fewer landlords to provide this kind of housing already in short supply, there will be fewer rental properties available to the low-income segment, which in large part are people of color. The net effect is essentially discriminatory and racist. With this ordinance, you will be setting yourself up for lawsuits based on what Ms. Ortiz provided due to the clear violation of the Indiana State Constitution. This at the expense of already burdened Michigan City taxpayers. With this rental inspection ordinance, especially those of you who will vote for this, you damage your res- reputation, you set yourself up for lawsuit and you label yourselves racist. This in my mind is crazy. If I were you, I would table this ordinance permanently and I would, in the future, think twice about proposing such ordinances that are so discriminatory and unlawful. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good evening, council members. My name is Brett Carney. Address is sixteen ninety-one East Porter Ave. Um, I currently own and manage about eighty units here in Michigan City under, uh, titled under Michigan City Rentals. Um, I've been here for about 15 years. Uh, I want to start by saying, um, we have a great working relationship with the building department. Sue does an awesome job over there. I think she may be running a little ragged sometimes, but she's great with getting back with us. Um, we've also had a few fires over here. Fire departments came out and did a great job for us. Um, we've had, uh, animal control, um, issues with animal control, um, with pets. They've came out. They've done a great job, gave us cell numbers, been able to contact them after hours. Um, the mayor stopped by and saw us on some of our projects we've been doing. Um, so we've enjoyed our time over here that we've been working. Uh, I think in all the time that we've been here, I can remember two calls, um, to, uh, the building department or to a code enforcer, um, that they had an issue with us as a business. Um, and some of those are, some of them are out of our control. We'll either have a disgruntled tenant or for whatever reason that is, um, but it was handled easily. Um, it went to Sue or whoever it was. Sue or Chris called me, said, hey, we have a tenant calling this. And I say, hey, look, let's meet on site as soon as we can get verification the tenant is there. And we went and met and took care of the problem. Um, so when I look at the resources that it will take to do this project, um, to do this and enforce the time and the effort and the dollars, um, I just wonder if they couldn't be spent better somewhere else. Um, you know, we currently have maybe six section eight houses that we, we do in that out of those eighty units that we rent. And those do get yearly inspections. Um, but there is more paperwork for my office ladies. Um, we have to set it up with the tenants. Um, rarely do those inspections pass. Um, where. Um, where then we have to go in and make those repairs. And ninety-five percent, ninety-nine percent of those repairs are due to damages that the tenant has done. And at that point, we then try to recoup those dollars from the tenant. We say, hey, look, that screen went- and, and the nice thing about the section-eight is when they move in, we have an inspection and everything passes. So when they, when, when we have busted doors or we have door-out screens or we have holes in the wall. But then to try to get those dollars back from those tenants is not an easy task. And we'd set up payment plans and a lot of those dollars, we never recoup um, until the next inspection comes along, or we have to threaten them with the fact that the section-eight tenant is gonna have another inspection in three months and they won't pass that. So, um, so that's a way that we can get those done. That won't necessarily be the case on this inspection. Um, so, uh, you know, I, I, the benefits of it, I just don't see being that great. Um, also, you know, about half of our units that we own are in Michigan City. The other half are in Chesterton, Boperezzo, Westville. Um, none of those units, none of those, um, cities have those same inspections. None of them have yearly inspections. We don't have any issues with our tenants over there. Um, every, everything seems to run fairly smooth without that, um-
Sir, if you could-
Okay, sure. Um, yeah, so I, I guess, looking at it, I just think maybe, maybe there are a few bad seeds here or landlords that don't do what they need to do. But I feel like, um, instead of maybe addressing those, you guys are putting us all in one big bowl, um, which I don't think is fair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, let me get a quick comment. Just want to ask a quick question. Can I do that? Or we want to go ahead and finish public?
Yeah, let's finish the, uh, public and then, then we'll have our time for, uh, comments.
Thank you. My name's Lisa DeRue at, uh, two fourteen East Eighth Street. And, um, I wanna, I wanted to speak on, uh, some of the information that's coming in. We're not, we we own properties here, several tenant properties, some short-term rental properties as well. Uh, we take very good care of our properties. Any tenant has any problem, they know to call us and we'll fix it right away. I think that's the way it should be. Um, I kinda, I don't know that inspecting everybody, uh, what the last gentleman said does seem like it's a big job to do. And it seems like it could open a can of worms for, you know, how involved the inspections are in the cost to the city. Um, I do want to point out that I feel like, like the last gentleman stated, you know, there's obvious properties. Um, we have a building next to us and a building across the street that are boarded up and abandoned, in my opinion. Um, there were tenants in there. I'm sure they were living in squalor over there. Um, and I believe that, you know, that's obvious. Um, I feel like the city could maybe tackle some of the obvious stuff first. And then when they, you know, uh, uh, make some progress there, hopefully figure out your way and move on to, uh, possibly doing some other types of inspections. I approve. I mean, I like the idea of the, an inspection and, and I would be willing to do that if I thought that that was a means to the end, but it does seem like a bigger can of worms than maybe is necessary when there's so much obvious, um, uh, work that needs to be done or properties that need to be addressed, um, that without, without inspecting and hiring somebody and inspecting every single property. And, you know, this gentleman who, you know, wanted to include the short-term rentals or the vacation rentals, I mean, he's got a point. Uh, again, our short-term vacation rentals are very sought after and we care about our, our guests and our tenants. So, um, it's not a problem for us. We don't think we would have a problem. But I do like the idea, and I think, uh, you had mentioned about somehow streamlining and, you know, that's just my two cents that tackling the obvious problems boarded up buildings in the, in the city are, are a huge eyesore and, uh, and they're bringing property values down. And I did want to add one more thing, you know, uh, the woman who brought up racism, um, you know, keeping, keeping people living in squalor. Uh, to me, doesn't seem racist to want to bring that up. I don't know what the solution is to, you know, inexpensive housing, but I don't think, you know, this person next door who was renting their upstairs that was just, didn't have windows, that's not a fair solution either. That, to me, is racism that that person has that property and doesn't care for it and rents it to somebody and takes advantage of them and charges them, you know, two hundred dollars a month or something, and they're living up there with no heat or no windows. So that's my two cents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Oh, okay. Mr. Fly? I didn't see him.
Okay, thank you. But since he's at the podium, I don't mind going next.
Okay, go ahead, sir. Yeah, and, and if I, I should have said this at the very beginning. Try to keep your comments to three, three and a half minutes. Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, hello, my name is, uh, George Ladon. I live at ninety-five eleven South One Hundred West Union Mills. Um, I had remonstrated at the workshop. And I, I just want to say briefly, it's an unnecessary burden. It restricts, uh, and, and discourages investment because, as Mr. Carney had mentioned, he has about forty here and forty in other places where this is not enforced, okay? And it does add a level of bureaucracy and paperwork and days of planning for this. And so with over sixty units, I can either take the hundreds of thousands of dollars and keep doing it here, do the extra paperwork, or bring it to a community that instead embraces and acknowledges, uh, the investment made, appreciates it, you follow the rules. And if you cannot commit to a level of, uh, you know, uh, sustained quality, there are ordinances that are there to address it, attack those people and enforce the fines. Because so far, I'm, I'm seeing places sit for decades, rent for decades, that have clear violations from the street and nothing is done about it. And there are ordinances to address it. Do that first, then we could believe that you could actually take care of this issue, but putting everybody together and saying, no, this way, uh, you know, the ones that are having no problem, here's some additional paperwork for you. You, 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 we, we spoke quite a bit about retaining fire department, retaining police officers because it's, it's essential to the city for those services. Yes, it is. And it's also essential to the city for investors to invest in the community and to provide the housing that's needed for the city to grow. So in closing, as an investor with quite a bit of property, this is not something that I would then keep going with and investing in a community that says, no, everybody's guilty until, you know, we, uh, we find you're not. So I'm just telling you, anecdotally, this guy would not, uh, appreciate that kind of treatment. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fly?
Hello, my name is Kenneth Fly, two eleven East Fulton Street. And I'm, um, currently the, I'm currently the, um, Housing Authority Commissioner. And, uh, you guys are speaking about the housing needs of Michigan City. And I wanted to be the first one to say and also take some responsibility of, uh, part of the housing crisis. And, um, I want to take that responsibility as a commissioner of the Michigan City Housing Authority. We have over forty, forty, um, vacancies that need to be written ready right now. Um, we've been stalling, dropping the ball and not, uh, going in and getting the places written ready. We've been quick to um, pit people out, but we've been very slow to pit people in. We have a turnover rate of, that's very poor, of pitting people out of homes versus pitting them back in homes. For example, Lakeland Estates is fifty, fifty units. Out of them fifty units, seventeen of them are boarded up. And with seventeen of them being boarded up in their three and four-bedroom homes, that's a lot of people with each home. And so what we got here is an adverse effect. So the people that's usually are rented to section-eight, they're renting to regular people because they don't have a home. And so the people that's get vouchers for section-eight, they can't fulfill them vouchers because people that needs a home is renting the section-eight homes. And so with, um, even the public housing and Lakeland, with all them units being vacant like that, without being rent-ready right now, even those people are taking homes that's usually be used for regular people and, uh, people that don't qualify for the public housing. And so what we got is, we got, um, people renting and taking the properties and units that they don't qualify for, but they take them as regular, regular, um, tenants and paying them more money because they need somewhere to live and it's it's stopping the growth of section-eight, stopping the growth of public housing. And so I think the Housing Authority play a big part right now in getting the ball rolling. And that means getting all of our units rent-ready. Therefore, the people that qualify for those units, they'll be able to be in those units. And the people that qualify for section-eight units, they'll be available because they're not being taken by regular people that needs housing. So far as inspection levels, Michigan City Housing Authority, we do a yearly inspection. And that's gonna be regardless of approving a plan or not with regular renters or, um, I mean, uh, landlords since of those nature. But we do, do inspections, uh, once a year as mandatory. Um, with everybody else that has their land and renting, my opinion on inspections and making it mandatory that you be inspected, I think that it should be done. I don't think it should be done as frequent, but you do need to have some accountability of keeping your units up. And that part for citizens and renters that's trying to, uh, rent, I don't think that it should go unexpected, inspected. And people have to be forced to live in conditions just because they need somewhere to stay regardless. So, uh, I don't think it should be frequent.
You can summarize?
Frequent and time is up. My name is Kenneth Fly and I'm blessed to be here. Thank you very much.
I thank you, Mr. Fly. Okay, we'll get on Susan.
Evening, Council. Jeff Ruder, Fire Marshal. Um, I just want to let everyone know that I'm in full support of this ordinance. Um, I think it's a good thing as a chief inspector of the city, mostly commercial. Um, if you're a responsible landlord, there's, there's really nothing to worry about. You, you keep your, uh, properties up and that's, that's a good thing. That's good for everybody. If you have a good relationship with your tenant, that's even better. Um, they don't have a fear of reporting issues to their landlords and that, and that's, that's good, uh, on our part as well. Um, it's the disconnect. People think that we're gonna be intrusive on the properties and that's not the intent of this. It's the intent of basic minimum housing um, comfortability and standards. So I have-
Okay, thank you, sir. And we have someone online. Uh, Angie Hensman?
Yes, hi, this is Angie Hensman, two-three-seven Leo Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, I would just like to say, we've heard a lot from the landlords, their perspective. Um, I have rented in Michigan City for nearly fifteen years. And I can tell you that there are many people in Michigan City who are not being heard that would love to see more accountability to the landlords of this city. And you speak about going to Chesterton and other locations and not having to deal with these kinds of ordinances. And that's because landlords don't get away with nearly as much as they do in our county. Whatever we have going on, it is not effective in providing and making sure landlords are held accountable to providing safe, minimum standard living conditions in this city. And I do not believe this is a racist ordinance at all. I believe it is standing up for the communities who have no voice. People who are afraid to speak out against their landlords for fear of retribution or being thrown out of their home. People who are being forced, uh, to live in conditions without water or electricity as retribution from their landlords. There's many things that are going on and we have got to hold them accountable. So what Ms. Ziegus is trying to do is give a voice and some protection to a group of people who really have not had any protection till this point. Um, our ordinances, our inspection ordinances are not doing the job. And I support this one hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie.
Ernie Holla, in three oh two Gladys Street, Michigan City. I've been against this from the beginning and I'm still against it. It is a violation of my rights and my tenants' rights. I spoke with my tenant when I collected her rent yesterday and I explained what was going on here tonight. But she was too afraid to come down. But her opinion to me, she does not want anybody inspecting her house. That's word of mouth from her, not from me. I wish she would have come down. I wish more tenants were here to express their opinions on their landlords. Because both houses I have, neither one of the tenants wants anybody inspecting their house. One's retired, she's home during the day. The other one works. It's gonna be a complication to get that house inspected. I don't agree with it. And what is this? Section twenty-two, eight oh three. You have to do it by October first of two thousand twenty-three. And you gotta do it therefore after the following year. You gotta do it every year? You've got it on listed the first time you put it down there. Why do you have to do it every year?
It's the registration that's gonna be every year? So we're gonna coordinate with the fire department to do it every year. Correct?
No, the fire department don't do it every year. I don't agree with that either. And I will continue to contest this till the very end. Because if I have to sell those houses, I will. Because I am not putting up with it.
Hey. Um, Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, uh, this is really unnecessary. We already got enough rules and regulations and orders on the books that we can already have, that we can enforce already. I've already stated that. Um, you know, what do we need? A five-dollar registration fee? Aren't we all, every property owner is registered with LaPorte County Yard? They sent us our tax bill every May. They don't have any trouble tracking us down and sending that one when, when let's do every, yeah, pair installments every two years. So I'm really concerned with it. You're gonna put these hundred and fourteen homes in Woodland Ridge subdivision. About ten years ago, the county tried to have an ordinance to have everybody had to have carbon monoxide detectors. It got turned out, like, have all those homes, they're gonna put it, have a carbon monoxide detector. You come over the house, the whole family will be dead. Also, oh, we had a house in, in the water tower place, so they were built in two thousand and ten. The length of the clothes dryer bed, super, super long. There's not, the rule for clothes dryer, they can't be any, they gotta be a hard pour and hard pipe. And they had the twenty-five foot, and if you have a ninety-degree angle, you take away five feet and a forty-five degree, you take away two feet. And if it goes underneath that twenty-five-feet towers, it has to have a booster fan on. This house we had in, in Westville, on the water tower place subdivision, it was just totally stuffed with lint. When we had, my sister passed away, we had to go and clean it out, move it out. The clothes weren't even coming dry and it's super fire hazard with that. Um, I also want to say, um, we already do have an inspection program with the fire marshal. I read this, the workshop. Um, this is right off the Michigan, the Michigan City dot com, right off the fire, uh, Michigan City Fire Department page. Inspections, and according to city code, the fire marshal conducts regular inspections of all businesses and schools within the city limits. The fire marshal, we also conduct inspections of private residences and rental units upon request- The Fire Marshal, we also conduct inspections of private residences and rental units upon request. As time and resources will allow. If you have received your annual inspection within the last thirty days. Please provide us with your feedback using the annual fire inspection review survey. Goes down and says um. A residential tenant service request. Inspection of private residence is not mandated by city ordinance. However, the Michigan City Fire Department will inspect private homes as a service to the homeowner or tenant. As time and resources will allow to address fire prevention, assess potential hazards and provide. Uh suggestions for home fire escape and plans. To request a residential inspection, please contact the Fire Marshal or the Public Information Officer at the Michigan City Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich.
So nobody ever said who was gonna sponsor a bill that when these tenants, oh, two, two, three East Park Grab Kathy Stransky. Kathy Stransky, okay. Who is going to, I haven't heard anybody wanna sponsor a bill. That after they pass inspection and these people move out and then they leave and they leave the landlord in the hole. That you would be willing to go after them for damages for the landlord because you said if the place was okay, awesome. I mean, it's a two-way street here. It's a two-way street.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who should speak on the subject? Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public speak on the subject? Uh, public comment is now closed. Any council comments? Councilwoman Zigus.
Yes, uh I address a couple of the things. First of all. The racism accusation is really quite something because what you're saying is people who are low income. And possibly people of color don't deserve minimum housing standards. That is exactly what you said. And second of all, I don't, sorry, it's my turn. So second of all, uh because this is a paperwork nightmare, I mean, I see the one page, you know, you know. Registration is not that bad, but I know scheduling the tenants to get. Prepared for an inspection once every three years. I get it that it's a little challenging, but this is your business. And so this is just kind of the way the businesses go. So that's kind of a couple of comments. I mean, you are in a business. You're not doing this out of the charity of your heart, so. Yes, it's gonna be an additional like burden for you, but I don't see this as being terrible. I just see this as being minimum housing standards. You don't want someone to come through. Health Department, if you're a restaurant and you say, I don't want anyone to come take a look at me because I'm doing everything right. I don't want anyone to invade my privacy. No, it's a business and they have a full right, the Health Department has a right to come and take a look and inspect.
Any other comments? Councilman Mack?
Um I got a question for the lawyer person and a couple of comments. Um you, there's obviously some disconnect with uh the statements I've been hearing about Indiana law. Constitutionality from the U S Constitution, Indiana Constitution. And the legalities of any of this. So just coming straight from the lawyer. Do you see where this disconnect could be? Because you you had to approve a lot of this. Um so it has to be legal in some form. Where where is this disconnect coming from?
Um I will say that in this particular case, um I am not the one that. I wasn't here during the workshop to produce. I I would not be the one necessarily to issue an opinion on it as we sit here. I think that the legal reference that was made. Um in terms of. How there was a House and Rule Act that was cited, for example. Um which is not typically. Uh unless it's a very new law, it's not typically the way that a law is codified. So I honestly, off the top of my head, can't tell you what that reference was to. Um I think from a general constitutional standpoint, there is always a lot of very subjective language in. Uh when you're talking about the legalities of of. Um of the of the constitutionality of an ordinance, ordinance, I'm sorry. Um a lot of times you're talking about concepts like, is it rationally related to a legitimate governmental purpose?
Okay.
How how narrowly tailored is it? Is there due process built in? Um and those are, those are big questions. So I I can tell you though that um Attorney Harris through our firm has been watching this kind of throughout. Um I would defer to his judgment and I'm trusted on this point because he he's been involved in this since the inception. Unfortunately, it's a. I mean, it's it's obviously, it's a, it's a big issue and it's one that I don't think can be. Uh you know, summed up in a, in a two minute.
Right, no, because it's big. It it's definitely big because the state of Indiana put that five dollar inspection plea fee in place. Uh relatively recently, on my term in the council, the state of Indiana addressed. Rental housing and they regulated and put that in. So I I don't know the details. Cause I'm I'm I've gotta go by my lawyer, but I do know that the state of Indiana did address renters ordinances and it it is. It might be complicated, it might be difficult, but different communities have different. Desires to protect portions of their community. And the only place we're coming from here, those of us that would be for this ordinance is knowing a lot of people that live here. Cause I I don't know the market of landlords. I do know that. Twenty, thirty years from now, there will be different, this room will be full of different landlords. Five years from now, this city will be full of different tenants. So it's flux, it's fluid. And for a city or a body or a homeowners association to have it static that they believe. Any of the tenants can come in, because if we we have low income, we are a low income community. And uh I definitely don't think I'm racist by trying to protect some of the people that I know. One, that probably are tearing up houses and aren't very good tenants and are terrible tenants, but that's, that's. A piece of our population. And two, people that actually um. Take advantage of that. I mean, that that exists here. So for a city to not address it whatsoever and believe that the market will automatically take care, but I guess that's where there's got to be some middle ground. When I hear lawyers saying it's legal and I hear firemen saying it's legal. I I definitely aren't, am not gonna get into the economic portion of taking the tenant tenant or the landlord's side because. Both of those individuals will rotate. They'll be gone and there'll be a new group. And cities have to have something to do that and uh. I would love to know the motivation to sell, because I've heard that more than once. Um and once, I think it was alluded to. The people that are here that are really interested in local, small owners of properties, when these ordinances come through. That uh mass selling takes place and they sell to the big guys. There has to be a market desire for the big guys to buy it though. That's a. So some of these market pressures just fascinate me when a council, you know, you should look at it this way. But that guy is gonna buy it and he's gonna be worse. Well, but will he be worse? You you know, you don't know those things, so it's very complicated. Um but I do feel the resonance of this town and the other town that has a lot of lower income people, because we're. Fifty percent, fifty something percent low income. Has to have somebody looking out for them. To to the degree is done. So different question, but to to just trust it to the market and the market indefinitely. I just don't think that is a smart way and I don't think smart cities or towns that grow actually do it that way. So that that's my sense. And I love the back and forth here, what happens, so thank you.
Make your comments, but would you say, because I agree with what one of you said.
Councilman Danny?
Yeah, real quick, and and this whole uh, this has been going on for a while. We tried this a couple of years back. And you know, we're back at it again and and what we were, what I have heard. The throughout the whole time was the cost is what's gonna make me sell. It was all, was the cost, the cost, the cost is gonna make me sell. And now, you know, we had, we had seventy-five dollars or whatever we were trying to do as a. And now that we said, no, oh, we found out we can only do five dollars. So the cost was what was gonna make everybody sell. What would, what's gonna make everybody sell now? Because, no, five dollars. What, the tenants?
Tenants don't want.
The tenants don't want it. The tenants don't want protection?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
And I find that hard, I find, I find it hard to believe that tenants.
Yeah.
Don't want protection.
Councilman, councilman?
Did I?
Yeah, just hold on.
Yeah, how much time I have left?
Let co, let the councilman have a say. We don't have give and take here. We have public comment. We're done. Now it's council comment, so it's up to the council.
Yeah, I just.
Speak.
Yeah, I I I find it hard to believe that a tenant doesn't want protections. Uh to make sure that they have the minimal living standards. Um you know, so you you're telling me you're fighting for the right to rent subpar housing to somebody because you're giving them low income. Housing, I don't know about that. Uh I don't know anybody in my neighborhood that would be happy to say there's no protections for them. Um that is, that's, that's a tough one for me to swallow, to hear that, that you know, your tenants don't, don't want any protection. So um I don't, I didn't, you know, that's just, that's just very interesting to me, you know, at first it was cost, cost, cost for three years. That that's what I heard. And now it's five dollars and it's interesting. That's all I'm gonna say.
Councilwoman Tillman?
Thank you. Um sitting here listening to everyone's comments and concerns. There's a couple of things. Uh one is if if um. Ms. Zigus can answer this. So is this just for all, is for all rental properties? So let's say someone has a resident and. They may have family members or an acquaintance or whatever that decides to move in. So if someone reports that, oh, this person is moving in, are they paying rent there? Is that gonna be inspected? Is that gonna be turned over for inspection? Or unless you see a double meter put on the resident, that still doesn't justify. Um that it's rental property. That person just may say, I don't want their water bill attached to my water bill. I just want it separate. Then there was another thing in here that mentioned um on page three about. During the um inspections, like the smoke detectors, I've rented for years. Um I hope this still doesn't apply to the department development where I used to reside. But they did their annual inspections. By far as smoke detectors, you have a smoke detector, but it don't get checked every month. It's left up to the tenant to replace that battery. So if they're going to, or whenever you come in to do that inspection. Who's gonna be responsible when they come in and they realize that smoke detector battery is not working? Is it gonna fall on that tenant? Because some people that rent um. Rental homes. That's in their contract, you're gonna be responsible for the maintenance of those things. So if that's in their contract, who's gonna be liable during that inspection? The landlord or that tenant? Also, I don't believe anyone's up here is saying that. We don't care or we don't have the concerns of our, of the, of the uh tenants. We definitely, our hearts go out to those who are living in these conditions. But we currently have these ordinances that are currently on the books now, as many of you have seen. I don't even think it's even about that five dollars, the registration fee. Take that five dollars and go buy some batteries and replace the smoke detectors. And put the batteries in there. But it's more so of to a certain degree invasion of privacy, perhaps. Perhaps, depending on who you speak to or who who you're asking at the time, or who is it gonna affect? Um I wouldn't want that. I don't believe that I would want that if you had to come in. If I know that I am a tenant, that I, that I am a landlord, but this tenant also has to go through that process as well. Um you have good and bad tenants, you have good and bad landlords. And I agree, it should not be all locked in together and just say everybody is gonna be penalized or is held accountable for that. We need to make sure that we are enforcing our current ordinances that are on the books. To where if we can't even gather. Getting people yards together or the debris that's out there currently now, fifth war. It needs a lot of help. Tall grass, abandoned buildings, broken out windows. We can't, we don't even have the manpower. The city does administration for the code enforcement, do not have the manpower. And I respect what the uh Fire Department spoke on, that they are in the agreement with this. And rightfully so, and should be. There's an ordinance that requires them to. So going through all of this is not saying that we don't care about the tenants. My concern first and foremost is the tenants and the tenants only at this point. But we can still do the same magnitude with what we currently have on the books. Instead of creating something new. My question is. What's the current status of Airbnbs? Are we still getting registrations on those? Are they paying their fines? Are people still reporting? Oh, I think that house may be an Airbnb. Also, now we got people that is stalking residents to see because they see ten cars. And I'm speaking firsthand on something like this, not an Airbnb, the apartment unit that I reside in, I will not mention their name. I have a good paying job, single parent, this when my children were babies. Because I purchased a brand new vehicle and had a car that was paid off. Hmm, she shouldn't be out here. Why does this person have two vehicles? So you can assume, people are assuming that. They can't afford that. There was something said in regards to discriminating or people of color. From the current position that I have with my current employer, as far as what is the poverty level? That we are below the poverty level here in Michigan City. Um as far as individuals who have financial obligations to pay child support. Puts a a lot of individuals under the poverty level. People that are receiving SSI, SSD, that also constitutes they are. Maybe receiving a combo that puts them at a poverty level. So doing these things or to say that people. It was mo- mostly said people of color. Does it affect people of color? It affect everybody that is at a poverty level. But unless you got the statistics, it appears. That the majority are people of color. And I think this is what the young lady was trying to convey. So with this being said, I am not in support of this. And actually, can I make a motion? On this?
Okay, so, do you real?
Yes.
Go ahead and Mr. Simmons.
I would, I would prefer attacking the boarded and blighted properties throughout the city. Uh before we jump into this. Uh ride down the boulevard, you see all the. These boarded houses been on the boulevard for five and six years and they're still there today. I count them. And we're talking about uh. We need to use the codes that are on the book.
Yep.
And he, and effectively enforce those before we jump into this. That's my feeling. Not only the boulevard, but you ride throughout the city. Blighted and boarded up vacant houses that's been there for five, six, seven years. That's my two cents.
Councilwoman Zigus?
Yes, well, Tracy, you have a lot of questions, so I'm just gonna address a couple of them. How do you define something as a rental property if you, you know, charge rent? And if you're registered with the Fire Department, that means you're a rental property. So those are the same ones and we're going to try to merge that registration. Uh as for privacy, it is a one-time inspection in three years. And it it will be done to, you know, the tenants and landlords, you know. Schedule, it's not gonna be, you have to be here this day and that time. And the reason we do all of them, because. Lot of tenants do not want to complain and in fact, some of them will get retaliated against and say, you're out of here as soon as they complain. That is the problem. We know that most of the places are just fine because they have running water, their windows open. We know that most of the places are just fine because they have running water, their windows open and close. The electric is not like hanging from the ceiling. It's just those properties and we can't be fair about which ones we inspect without saying we're doing all of them. So that's kind of a couple of points that I wanna.
And this is just real two, two points that I, that I failed to mention before. One, code enforcement is for this. So if we've got codes on the book. Uh, that, and the code enforcement people have all of these tools at their ability to single out one or two. Then how come they're not doing it? Because I've heard glowing, um, glowing, uh, but I've heard glowing examples of, you know, I've got a great relation with code enforcement. They did, they come to my place all the time and these large ones. So a lot of people respect Sue and Christine and they think they do a great job. But Sue and Christine somehow feel that this is gonna give them a tool to fairly do the job. And, uh, the, the, the difference between a identifying a blight or a home and actually doing something, if you think the state of Indiana protects or don't protect renters, homeownership is something else. So whatever I identify about your house as a councilman or mayor, you are homeowner. You've got a lot of latitude there. I don't know if it's possible to like, if we could have fixed the Marquette Mall through just, you know, finding owner and making them do something. It wouldn't be there for thirty years. So you know, just, there's bad homeowners, there's bad renters, there's bad this and that and that. It's just, I just don't get the connection that we, that I, that I hear sometimes on, you know, since I see this, therefore this. If you see a bad house, it's because that owner is there and there are no tools in our toolbox to make a homeowner do a whole lot. You know, you can find him to death to get his grass cut, but, uh, if there's structural damage in there, you know, you don't, you just don't know. And there's just no easy ways for any of these communities in the last twenty, thirty years that they're deteriorating. Uh, to just get people to fi- magically find money to fix up their blighted properties. So, yeah, that's all I'd have to say.
Well, I, I, I've just heard about, uh, every angle. Every parallel there is a here about this. I was at the workshop and I listened and I took a lot of notes. And I wanna say that, uh, Mr. LaDon, I took all your information very seriously. And, uh, start cruising. And I think that, as I stated at the workshop, I think that by doing this, we're creating environment to have mass sellings. And that then we're gonna have, because in the marketplace, let me finish. In the marketplace, where we're at right now, would home values on speculation going up through the roof and people's tax rates increasing, uh, exorbitantly. Exorbitantly, mine went up twenty-five percent. Just for an example, and I'm gonna make a comment about this under console comments also. Is that we are creating our own demise by this legislation. We are gonna create a crisis in the housing industry in our community, which needs affordable housing. And after the last week's workshop, I spoke with Christine and Sue. And they said, this thing is not attainable. And I thought that they were gonna say, we're gonna come back with something different and rework this thing. Now what's happened? As far as I'm concerned, not too much. All right, not too much. And I, I take the comments made, it, it's not like a head full steam. Is that we should be looking at and thinking about the comments made and what we're gonna, what you're attempting to do, the crisis that it's gonna create. And I think that we should be more community orientated to people who provide housing and the tenants. And there's a way to do it? I don't think this is it. And I don't think I'm listening, but I don't think other people are listening. And I, uh, I think that workshop was very good on, uh, showing all the different angles of it. And especially in general, what conditions will happen? You had a lot of expert testimony here and at the workshop, people that owned a lot of houses. And I, I believe what they're telling me, because what, what you don't realize is that there is a lot of, uh, things that are wrong in the dis- inspection department that aren't being fixed. And I think that, I believe that we should enforce what's on the books. But also, I think we need infects, we need to fix the code that's being imposed on everybody. So people can work on their properties. And maybe that's why some of these properties aren't getting fixed. And tenants are have a problem. But really, how did, how did we get to this point on this ordinance? How did we get here? Where are all the complaints? Where are all the, where are the problem? Uh, list of problem landlords, may I say? That should be public record. Where is it?
Talk about law- lawsuit, I think that would have. Well, I don't know.
Even, no, it, no, even, how many is it? How many is it? The problem landlords, that's a easy question and that information we should know. Has that ever been shared with you? Cause when I talked to Sue and Christine, they didn't tell me how many problem child, how many problem children they had in the city. And I think that's a good point. Thank you. And I agree with Mr. Simmons and Ms. Tillman on their remarks. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ziegus.
Uh, one more comment then. Uh, I see that, you know, some people are very wary of this legislation. But I want you all to think about, then do we need to get more code enforcement and work on streamlining that process? Which is, I am looking at that. So I want you to think about that and see if we can fix not just the rental properties, of course, all of them. So.
Okay, I have a, uh, a question for Councilwoman Ziegus. So with Sue and Chris, in order to enact this program, how many more code and officers? How many more code enforcement officers are we gonna have to hire?
When I talked to the planning department, they feel that hiring one additional code enforcement officer for this program, I'm not saying to cover whatever else is going on, because there is a lot. Because we're doing two wards at a time. And there's around two thousand rental properties in Michigan City, so six hundred and sixty some, you know, a year. Which they said one person can do by doing three inspections a day. That's what they told me was possible.
Councilman, I'm not, I'm not done yet. Hold on, hold on. All right, so we're talking one person that's gonna take care of this, right? Okay, and right now, uh, okay, I'd, I'd just leave it at that, cause I'm gonna talk to Sue and, uh, Chris, get more information about this, uh, whole program. Councilman Paul Prabulinski, Mr. Councilman Simmons, do you have a, uh, question? Cause your light's on. Okay.
Okay, with those comments, um, uh, six hundred and fifty inspections a year for one individual. That's two inspections, uh, or no, that's more than two inspections a day. That's about two point four a day. I believe. How is one individual gonna do that with the problems that we already heard about scheduling? What all the tenants say is somebody's sick and they don't want you coming in, so now that throws your whole schedule off. I just don't see how it's manageable. I really don't. And it, it's not. If they need another person, don't they have two positions that aren't filled right now? So that's saying that we're gonna get three people more in, in the planning department. I, I mean, this, this thing is snowballing like it's, it's, it's really getting to the point where if we need to, where are they at? But how can you explain to me how somebody's gonna get all these inspections done? It just doesn't seem feasible to me. I'm not trying to be negative. I'm trying to be in the reality that that is a scheduling nightmare. Thank you.
Councilman Debbie.
Final comment. This is a weird twist that's going on here. We had origins that came up where we were talking about plowing, uh, sidewalks. And our street department stood right here and basically said they didn't have the, the manpower to be able to plow sidewalks. Up and down Michigan Boulevard, up and down Franklin. The street department sat right there and said they could not enforce this thing. We didn't have the equipment. They said they didn't have the manpower to take off the streets for plowing the streets. And the people who are making that argument now about there's not enough code enforcement officers to enforce this, pass that. But now, later on down the line, we have paid, uh, how much money for that, that, uh, thing that would plow some sidewalks? It all came after the fact. So i- it's kind of a weird twist that that's thrown up as the argument now. But when our actual street department sat right there and told you that they could not enforce plowing some sidewalks. So it just kinda falls dead to hear that, that argument now, right now. Uh, so. Interested.
I was the one that passed, had that, introduced that ordinance. And that was conversations that was had. And for those who were not in those conversations, as I would say, um, method to the madness. It had to start, and I get it, this may wanna start somewhere, but we already have somewhere to start. This was a new beginning for the sidewalks. This ordinance that's before us right now, it's already on the books. So I would propose this, since we still have the mayor in, in here. Budget hearings for twenty twenty-four is coming up. And maybe this needs to be a conversation with the city finance, with the controller and with the code enforcement to find out truly the need of staffing to get the, to have enough code enforcers out there. Not just the minimal, if we are capable to financially sustain this by not just replacing the two or actually, or hiring the third person, do they truly need more than that? So we need to take a look to see what do they truly need. And I've, I've said it before, budget hearings are coming up. This is something that we need to take a look at. And this is something that we need opposed to establishing something new. We need to work with what we have right now. If we can't get that together, why would we hire another new person? Pay the benefits, give them the salary, and they may have to sway and then also pick up other responsibilities or tasks that would be assigned to them far from this ordinance that's presented to us right now. So to eliminate, let's look at hiring additional people for that department.
Any more council comments? Any more council comments? Any more council comments? No more comments. This read this, uh, ordinance be held over till for third reading and our next council meeting. Madam Clerk. Our next ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, an ordinance establishing a fund for a specific maintenance and repair of brick streets within the city of Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Paul Prespolinski.
And the author had to be excused for a minute. Oh, he's, uh, he's coming back. Okay, we are on the, uh, Brick Streets ordinance and we are at, uh, comments by the author.
I wanted to make sure that, uh, does everybody have a amended copy of the ordinance? Because I wanna make, uh, amendments by substitution here. And it's in red.
Yeah.
Right.
This was tabled at the.
It was tabled at the last meeting. It's gotta be, nor, and a motion has to be made to bring it off the table.
I'm, I moved to bring it up to table.
Support.
There's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
Point of order, I do have a question, because when we, when we table it to a specific timeframe, I thought it automatically went back on the agenda. And that we didn't have to remove it off the table.
It does.
I'm just saying, yeah, so I don't think we have to go through the votes. When it's table in, definitely, we have to take it off the table.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, um, so you do have a specific point in your agenda. I do understand that. I guess out of the stake with consistency, we, it read the same under the last entry. So, I mean, but, but if historically it's been tabled to a specific date, I think that's.
Yeah, we noticed that the, the last time, we didn't catch it, but historically, that's what we done. If we tabled it to a specific date, we don't, we don't go through the, uh, the, uh, motion.
All right, so that is, that is the, uh, the console protocol. And we will move on with the author's comments.
Thank you.
I, uh, on the bottom of the page, it, uh, since the controller and I'll, I'll read that now, therefore being ordained by the common consul of the city of Michigan City, LaPorte County, Indiana, that the city controller is authorized to create a fund to be entitled the Permanent Brick Street Repair Fund, which is to be a permanent fund. The city controller is directed to appropriate two hundred and fifty thousand from the riverboat fund into the permanent brick street fund. No motor vehicle, and this is the amended version. No motor vehicle highway funding shall be utilized in this appropriation. Further, the operation of this ordinance shall not reduce any appropriation of the motor vehicle highway funding to any other purpose or department within the city. When and if repair of a brick street takes place within the boundaries of a TIF district, the repairs will be funded through the appropriate TIF district funding. The fund shall only be used for the maintenance and repair of streets governed by the Michigan City Ordinance. Section eighty-six eight and shall be utilized for no other purpose of any time during its existence. The reason that, uh, was clarification on that amendment was put in there. So it was understood how the money would be used when it's appropriated. And that the, uh, there are streets, brick streets in the TIF district. And, uh, we wanted to cover all, all these different, uh, positions so that the fund would not be misused or misinterpreted. And it's a long overdue, cause the last time the, uh, ordinance was created and amended was in, uh, two thousand and three. And I was the, uh, amending, uh, author of that amendment. It, it named the streets and it, it talked about, uh, different, different things and that. But the main purpose of this is so that we attain funding and that we get, uh, so there's funding available, if there's any work that say an intersection needs to be repaired. If they're doing a sewer project, that there's funding available. If there's any work that say an intersection needs to be repaired, if they're doing a sewer project, that there's funding available. There's no argument. It's in writing and the money can be used. And we have, and that's part of our history. And I, I personally think since, you know, the reason why I'm authorizing it or, yeah, authorizing it is that most of the brick streets are in the second ward and it's part of our character and part of our history. And it add value, it adds value to the scenic and historical nature of our city and our neighborhoods. And we have in the historical district an interpretation of brick streets on a couple of intersections and a couple walkways for pedestrians, but those are not named in here because they're not brick streets. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Is there, uh, any public comment on this ordinance? Any public comment on this ordinance? Any public comment? Public comment is now closed. Any council? Comment? Councilwoman Ziegus?
Uh, yes, I have a concern. Uh, can we make redevelopment commission use TIF funds on this? I mean, I don't know if we have the authority to say they will be used by TIF dollars. I'm, I'm just asking.
Well, I will, as long as it's designated in the ordinance that they can, you want that TIF money used for that and it's passed and it's signed, it's becomes part of the code. Okay, any other, uh, comments by council members? I do have a comment, uh, with, with brick streets. And I've lived around brick streets there in the second ward for many, many years. And if you look at the history of brick streets and the repair work on them, to me, brick streets don't wear down as fast as blacktop streets. Uh, you can run a snowplow across them many, many times. Cars across them many, many times. They just don't need the maintenance work. So if we have a fund that's there to maintain them, that these streets, I don't think the two hundred fifty will be, you know, gobbled up. Like blacktop work is gobbled up and these are gonna be for specific streets. And take for example, like Lafayette's or, uh, York Street, York Street. Yeah, let's go right to the crux of the problem. What's going on here? If you look at York Street, York Street between Barker Ave and Homer Street was redone three years ago. Okay, three years ago. In the street, you know, it's not perfectly level like blacktop, but the street is now in great shape and it'll be like that for a long time to come. But then if you go further down Lafayette Street, the bricks or York Street, the bricks aren't necessarily in bad shape, but the shoulder work needs to be done and the intersection work. The old blacktop needs to be scraped off, get back to the bricks and bring this back to the way it was and make it a nice street. You know, I hear people, well, let's blacktop things. Let's just get it over with and blacktop everything. You know, you, you gotta have a little bit of history behind you, you know, if that was the, if that was the crux here and that's our philosophy, then why didn't we, uh, blacktop everything down in the, uh, uh, not Uptown Arts District, but, you know, where the public libraries at, the first ward? Yeah, we should've just blacktopped everything there. But back then, the city planner, the mayor, council people saw it as being a value added to the, uh, you know, the nature of the, of the, uh, neighborhood and things like that. So I, in my mind, is that brick streets are worth their money in gold. They add a lot to the value of the city, the character of the neighborhood. And that's what we want, right? We wanna be a different city here. We want the Uptown Arts District, we want Midtown, we want this, we want that. Well, this is part of that. And I believe that this has, this should be, uh, voted on, you know, in a favorable manner at the, uh, on the third reading. And that's all I have to say. Any other council comments? Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, um, do we know the, 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 the cost of, um, York Street? I don't.
I'll answer that. I'll give you a rough estimate. It's about two hundred fifty grand a block.
So I'm trying to figure, I said, how much was York Street? I don't, I don't, I can't divide it by block.
Yeah, well, I, I. So what I said is like two hundred fifty or two twenty. I think it was two twenty. Alright, but here's, here's, uh, if you look at the value of it, those streets were put in, they're reaching a hundred years old right now. That's where, that's what they're reaching. So if you look at the value of how many times asphalt lasts, if they were asphalted, that normal asphalt, you know, depending on what grade you purchased to do the street work, will, uh, o- only last a match of thirteen years if you read that Paser book. And, uh, so they're, they're well worth the money because their value with their wear and tear outlast asphalt hands over fist. And also with, uh, that question, you know, being asked how much? How much is it not by repairing them? Like on, uh, what Don Preswalinski, uh, mentioned on York Street? They plugged off, they did more damage when they plugged off the intakes for the combined sewers over there, cause now you got water when it rains on the hill. If everybody knows York Street, there's a hill that comes down and the water lays up in there for days. And it's destroying the, it's destroying the street down there. Needs to be worked on. That's the other reason on, on get, getting this legislation on the books. And I feel quietly remiss that I didn't do this in two thousand and three when I amended the original ordinance, because we had Riverboat money at that time. We would've had a, a nice pot of money there to do the work and keep the maintenance going on, on these streets. Thank you. Any other, uh, question by council members? Councilman Dabney, you got?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, alright. Alright, no other, uh, questions? This, uh, ordinance will be held over for our next reading, our next meeting on third reading. Madam Clerk, our, uh, next ordinance on second reading by title only. Uh, and this here was also tabled on second reading at the April eighteenth meeting and till tonight.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, an ordinance creating a permanent sidewalk fund for sidewalk repairs for the city of Michigan City. And this is introduced by Paul Preswalinski, Tracy Tillman, Angie Nelson Deitch, Sean Fitzpatrick, and Don Preswalinski.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time?
No. I believe that this was, uh, had a small correction in this on the, uh, city, the city controller passed, uh, create a fund to be entitled the permanent sidewalk, which is, uh, can be a permanent fund and then a substitution caller is directed. I, I'm with.
Alright, I believe that the word appropriate should be striked and I think, I think that that was also, uh, not corrected, but I am gonna ask to move this along to have, uh, uh, amendments on third reading. So straighten out this one word in here and that first, uh, and the second numeral on the second, on the, uh, directing in to appropriate, cause can't do that. We can just ask. And I'll have that corrected for the next meeting. But, but the other, the other thing is to create this fund. And I just started out with that hundred thousand because that's what we've been doing. But the, the real thing is that this sidewalk funding is very important to the nature of the, um, the character of the neighborhoods. A lot of these sidewalks are just deteriorating. They're, they're, they're just falling apart. And I don't believe that as much as we talked about sidewalk funding and maintaining sidewalks, you know, cleaning them and all that, that we could probably use more than a hundred thousand because they've been ignored for so many years. I mean, I, I originally complained about sidewalks years ago when Beeler was the mayor. That's how far back this goes. And we created a program of fifty, we created a fifty fifty program, and I talked about it at the last meeting, that the cost of insurance got so exorbitant, a lot of, a lot of contractors would not bid on this anymore. So I don't know, maybe we need to make an exception on sidewalk work. Alright, well, I'm just asking to pass this on, uh, and have amendments on third reading and I'll correct that second, uh, uh, sentence.
I, I support that.
Thank you. Okay, there's been a motion and a second for third reading on this ordinance tonight. No, 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 amendments on third. Oh, amendments on third reading. Oh, okay. Alright, that being said, there's been a motion and a second. Uh, Madam Clerk, on the vote?
Don Preswalinski.
Aye.
Jean Simmons.
Aye.
Dalia Ziegus.
Aye.
Paul Preswalinski.
Aye.
Tracy Tillman.
Aye.
Bryant Dabney.
Aye.
Michael Mack.
Aye.
Angie Nelson Deitch.
Aye.
It's eight in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, okay, uh, are there any further council comments on this ordinance? I'd like to make a couple of comments. Uh, I know that the councilman, Paul Preswalinski, was talking about a hundred thousand dollars. I have no problem even raising, raising that funding. A hundred thousand dollars goes, in my mind, not very far when it comes to sidewalk work. And the amount of sidewalks that we have in, in the wards or sidewalks, you know, there's a lot of sidewalks in town, a lot of sidewalks need, need fixing. And, uh, if you read articles, you know, just like it says here in the, uh, in the, in the ordinance where the sidewalk is at, the United States Department of Transportation, you know, sidewalks are found to be the best and preferred method for accommodating pedestrian traffic within cities. We don't take care of that. We don't take care of the sidewalks. You know, the neighborhoods just continue to fall apart. So may look at making a, uh, amendment to increases by the next, uh, council meeting. Yeah. That being said, no further comments on this ordinance?
I have a comment.
Okay. Uh, public comment? Yvonne?
Yes, Yvonne Hofmester, City Controller. I just want to verify that you were going to change the general fund from that ordinance.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, cause I, I wasn't, I wasn't clear to me when you, what you were saying you were going to change.
That was taken out.
Oh, okay, because the.
And, and I'm looking at the second sentence and I wanna clarify that, so there's no misgivings about that.
Yeah, the ordinance that was attached to the agenda still says general fund.
Well, okay, then we're, we're gonna straighten that out on third reading.
Alright, I, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Right. And it was changed, it just wasn't italicized on that first sentence in red. It should've been red, cause the general fund was taken out. And I think that, that was on the, that was on the, uh, other ordinance too, and it was taken out. Okay, Ms., uh. I'm following your instructions, Yvonne. Okay, Councilwoman, uh, Ziegus?
I have a question because, uh, here it says not currently in the TIF district. So you're saying anything in the TIF district was just, I'll be allowed to deteriorate? Because TIF districts are for development, economic development, and sidewalks are really pushing it to define as, as a redevelopment tool.
No, it's not. They did all the, I'll, I'll argue that point forever because they did all the sidewalks, curb work and everything as an economic tool on Ohio Street, Tennessee Street, Elston Street, Buffalo Street. Come on over and look at it and they, and they fixed up the, and they also did street repair in there on the brick streets because they were doing sewer work and they came up with a program to put bulkheads in. Do the curb, they didn't tear any of the streets apart. They bulked ma- out of curving. They held on streets in place and it was, they did a good job on there. And I believe, uh, Boyd Phillips was the engineer behind that when they did all that work. So, uh, there is a way that you can use TIF funds and combine with other funds. Oh, yes. It's not for repair work. It's new construction. Alright? So when you tear out a sidewalk, it's new construction. You're not like, you know, putting a skim coat on it, you know, or something like that. You gotta tear it out and do it right. Okay, alright, no further questions on this, uh, ordinance. It'll be held over for third reading. Madam Clerk, next ordinance on third reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only.
That's on the lateral. Yeah, we're onto the lateral.
Okay. An ordinance establishing a fund for subsidizing sewer lateral repairs within the city of Michigan City. And this is introduced by Paul Preswalinski, Tracy Tillman, Angie Nelson Deitch, and Don Preswalinski.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Yes, I wanna make, uh, amendments on, uh, by substitution. And it is in red on sentence number two on the last, now therefore being ordained, and that says that the, uh, general fund is taken out of that. And it says that the controller is directed to appropriate two hundred fifty from the currently obligated ARP funding to transfer to the sewer lateral repair public property fund. The fund, the, in red, the fund must be therefore be exhausted prior to designating expiration date of the ARP funding appropriation. The, and then it goes on to three, which is new. The fund shall only be used to subsidize resident costs for lateral repair within the boundaries of the city, the city property easements and right of ways upon application. We, uh, uh, with conversation, the subsidies approved and appropriated by the operations of this ordinance shall be considered retroactive. And that is to be filled in tonight, cause we could, we had a little disagreement on the, the retro uh, date, but it was two thousand and nineteen, not two thousand and seventeen, which I've earlier stated after reading the complete report here that they did, uh, in two thousand seventeen. But that it's based upon the residence ability to prove through the use of sanitary district records that they reside in that property where the repair, repairs took place at the time the repairs were made. And that's, that's the biggest, uh, uh, amendment to that ordinance. And the reason being why this is being, uh, put forward is because there's ARP money there to start this working, to start working on this. And that it's not gonna break the bank. But as I read earlier, all the funding That it's not gonna break the bank, but as I read earlier, all the funding. That we spent on. The ARP money. Which was thirteen million dollars. Yes. Thirteen million dollars that we have three point four nine six left. That will be, uh, has to be used within two thousand and twenty-six. Is the expiration date of those funds. So at that date. If those funds are not exhausted, they gotta be returned. I believe I'm correct, and that a new funding source will have to be used. And that, just so you know this, is that. Those costs can be so exorbitant. Up in the range, there's, uh, there's a group here from Pearl Street that I know that want to speak on this. And I appreciate that, and I appreciate their help on everything that we're trying to do, is that. Some of these costs are like fifteen thousand dollars. We're not cheap, and we're talking about that the homeowners. Were socked with this by the sanitary board in two thousand and nineteen. So. Depending how deep your sewer is, it depends on how much you're gonna pay. But is F, but really, if you ask yourself, is that really fair? Is that really fair when this money's there? Is it fair at all? I don't think it is. I think it's shrugging their responsibility because they put the taps in in the street. And you're forced to hook up to them when they initially put them in. And it's not talking about anything about private property, this is all city property, the city easement. And the city streets, that's what it talks about. And I, I'll give you a comparison. There's a lady sitting in the audience that spent. An exorbitant amount of money, had to dig in her retirement savings. I had a sewer replaced in my backyard. To tap in, it was like forty-five hundred dollars and it was sixty feet. This lady had about twenty feet. Maybe not even that, fifteen feet replaced. And it was like, I believe, twelve or fourteen thousand dollars. It can, I believe that this will make the sanitary district more responsible to. Progressive bidding on these projects, or maybe even take it over themselves. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Councilman. Any other, uh. Comments on the sponsors?
I'm gonna ask for amendments on third reading. I can tell right now.
Okay. Yeah, wait, I know Yvonne, I'm sorry, I know you've been standing there for a while. Do you have something you'd like to say?
I was just waiting for public comment.
Okay. Okay, uh, any other comments by the sponsors? Haven't done public comment? Go ahead, Yvonne.
Van Hofmaster City Controller. Um. There is a directive from the State Board of Accounts that goes in line with the final rule. On the ARPA funds, you cannot emphasize, cannot transfer this money to another fund. So what this council will have to do is submit a resolution for the Seventh Amendment to the ARPA plan. That, that you would appropriate X dollars for this purpose. And, and that's how we would be able to spend the money for this purpose.
Okay, so you're telling me I gotta get a resolution put together for the next meeting? To. Do this and then have it written in there as per the, uh, resolution to move the money, right?
We cannot move the money from the ARPA fund. The money will stay in.
Okay, I got you, we'll, we'll, we'll correct it. Alright, we'll make it do it, alright?
Thank you, Yvonne.
Jeez.
Eileen O'Shea, Spur Town, Lee, four thirteen Pearl Street, representing everyone on some Pearl Street. My first comment would be, please, at the next meeting, put us before all the others because I'm tired and I want to go home. But I do appreciate you guys listening to us and I do appreciate you doing your jobs. Because I could not sit here for three hours every time. We would like this passed, we would like some help. The address was twelve, or four sixteen Pearl, four thirteen is now having issues in the six hundred block. There's already been two houses, one was back in two thousand and nineteen. Multiple houses are having issues, I have documents from multiple houses. Um, a- and what Mr. Paul Preswalinski is saying is that it, it is not. On our private property and that's where we're having the issue, it's, it's out of the easement. And that's why we're here saying, please help us. I, I love the idea about getting other types of bidding because twelve thousand dollars was the half, so. We're just here asking, it, it is, it's very hard to listen to everybody talk about, um. A- and I understand all the complaints, but when you were talking about the other issues. When you're not able to flush a toilet, when you're a family of five who own the house. We're not renting, we own the house, but now we're left with these bills that we cannot afford. We want that help, so. Please help us, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public who should speak on this ordinance? Anyone else in the public who should speak on this ordinance?
Yes, Ernie Hollahan, three oh two Gladys Street. And it amazes me that people have to pay for something that's on city property. Then, I, I just don't understand that at all, it doesn't sink into my head, it's not theirs. It belongs to the city. I, 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 I don't get it.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the public? Public comments now closed, any comments from the, uh, council, Councilwoman Zegus?
Uh, yes, I have a couple of comments, first of all. I, I, I'm very wary of taking this out of ARP money. Just because there are very strict limitations on how to use the money. So I don't know if this has been cleared, you know, through Baker Tilly yet, however. Who's gonna make the decision on who qualifies for this money? Are we just gonna pick and choose people that came to you first, first come, first served, or whatever? So is there gonna be a vetting process for who gets this money? I, I understand people need it, but then, you know, when it runs out, who's, who's gonna be left, you know, holding a, an empty bag? Uh, my second question is, I seem to recall that NIPSCO has some kind of an insurance policy. That if you pay monthly, then if you have some kind of thing, it doesn't happen. I see, I'm just asking, because I really don't know, I have heard of that, and so I'm just wondering if that's like anything that we could do.
I think, uh, Mr., this name.
Okay, well, yeah, I'm sorry, so I do understand that you need help. But I just wonder, like, how do you do this fairly? But I think it's wrong that anything that's on city property is somehow your responsibility, thank you.
I, I'll, I'll, uh, may I address that, uh, comment?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay. You're the president.
Right. Thank you, thank you. That, uh, who is going to administer, who is going to administer this program? Alright, when somebody comes in with a bill from a contractor, say, hey, we had our sewer, you know, who's gonna administer it? It's the city controller, do they go to the city controller's office and get paid for it? You know, do they go to the city engineer, they go to sanitary district, or are they, who's gonna administer? I'm just asking, because we gotta have these details worked out before this thing is, uh. Before it's passed.
I understand that, I'll answer your question too.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, if you read. Number four in the, uh. At the, the now therefore be it ordained. The subsidies approved and appropriated by the operation of this ordinance. Shall be considered retroactive to two thousand and nineteen based on the residence ability to prove. Through the use of sanitary district records. That they will reside in the, they resided in the property where the repairs took place. I specifically asked for that to be put in, and that. The sanitary districts have records where these repairs were done. It's all documented in their records, and that. And if they're still living in that house, they'll go to the sanitary district, the sanitary district. Will make a request to, uh. Controller Hoffmaster, I'll go in front of the ARP committee. To get their, to get their refund. If you don't agree with that, then give me an amendment on how we'll do it. But the, but the thing is, is this, if I may, alright, Yvonne? Um, I handed you out a study today that was done in, I'm, I'm, that was done. Into two thousand and seventeen, the initial study on this sewer project, the Barker Lafayette Sewer Project. Was two thousand and three, and it was cited in their, um. In their, uh, reference to Pearl Street was supposed to be the first street done. Because of all the problems on Pearl Street. Pearl Street is located right on, uh, the street directly to the north of Elston High School. And there's been about sixteen people on that street that I counted the cuts in the street. That have had their, uh, sewers worked on. But, but the mi- but the main thing is this. Here's what you should think about. Is that they're doing a repair on Lincoln Ave over on the west side of town. They're doing the same kind of repair over there. And the sanitary district is paying for it, and you know who's paying for the paving? It's on the city's paving list this year, so that's more paving, it's about twelve hundred feet of pavings going on over there. That should be going on in the neighborhoods of the city of Michigan City, oh, and by the way, that's in a Tiff district. They could have been, they could have went to the Tiff, uh, redevelopment commission to help them fund that. To get, put more money into the neighborhoods. So that twelve hundred feet of paving, that's like four city blocks, alright? That could have been done in some war that they're doing over there in shiding. The responsibility of the sanitary district and redevelopment commission. So we'll get that straightened out, so Yvonne, tell me what you want straightened out, and I'll get it straightened out.
Thank you, Yvonne Hofmaster City Controller, and I'm, I'm truly not trying to shoot this program down. But the final rule on the ARPA funds. You cannot pay for anything that was done prior to March of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, we'll change that.
To find another funding source if you're going back to twenty nineteen.
Okay, thank you, we'll find that, we'll find that funding mechanism.
I, I move to, uh, make amendments on third reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to make amendments on third reading. Madam Clerk, take your role, please.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mrs. Zegus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswalinski?
Definitely aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
And Mr. Don Preswalinski?
Aye.
That's eight in favor and zero opposed.
Uh, Madam Clerk?
Thank you all the ladies from Pearl Street. Alright, alright.
Madam Clerk, if you would please, uh, we're all done with the, uh. Ordinances, right. Under new business, the council has the, uh, one appointment to economic development revolving loan fund. Term expires June ninth, twenty twenty-three, incumbent is James Stilecki. And I am going to, uh, call Mr. Stilecki and see if he's still interested in being on that, uh, committee. Uh, under unfinished business, the council has the following appointment to the Michigan City Social Status. African-American males, term expired February fifteen, twenty twenty-three. And it's a one-year term, and the incumbent is vacant. Is with the ministerial association, and we are now to, uh, public comment? Any public, oh, Councilwoman Tillman?
Thank you for the acknowledgement, um, under the unfinished business in regards to the comment for the vacant, um. See for, on the social status of African-American males. Um, I did speak with the president of the Ministerial Association on today. And she will be getting a letter submitted, the, um. The representative thought that. He was suppo- he was supposed to present that, but, um, I, I confirmed with her that she needs to get that submitted, hopefully, um, within this. By the end of this week.
Alright. Thank you. Uh. Public comment. And if you would please, under public comment, keep it to three, three minutes, three and a half minutes, please. Go ahead.
Ernie Hollahan, three oh two Gladys Street, Michigan City. Ah. Mr. Dabney?
Yes, sir.
If you would like to come and speak with my tenants, they would definitely speak with you. You just let me know, and I can set it up for you.
Thanks, sir.
Please stay around. I can get their names and contact everybody.
Brian Gross, eight thirty West Sixth Street, um. Bunch of random things after tonight's meeting, uh, first thing, as far as trying to register. Uh, landlords and things, inspect their buildings. I live between two dilapidated pro- properties. One, I occasionally see raccoons going in and out of the basement, um, nobody's lived there in quite a few years now. The other one, um, a car hit it. And knocked a lot of the bricks and stuff off the foundation, they're just kinda hanging there. Also, a couple of years ago, somebody broke a window, and there's still, still sharp, uh, shards in there. And this building is right on the sidewalk. And still has not been repaired or boarded up, oh, by the way, the city owns that building, the old police substation. So the city's got a lot of work to do before they start getting on landlords, even on their own properties. Um. You know, as far as code enforcement, I've talked with some of the code enforcement people and inspectors that have. Come and gone over the past couple of years, which seems to be quite a few. They have not been pleased with the leadership in the planning or the building commission. And they've actually made, some of them have made comments to me about the building commissioner actually making up her rules as she goes. You know, it seems to me that those two departments are just there trying to grab power. I don't know if this ordinance is just that they want more power or what. But, um, especially since the planning commissioner, I'm sorry, the building commissioner doesn't even live in Michigan City. You know, I, I'm not sure what their motives are, I'm not sure their motives that are good for the Michigan City people. Or for low-income housing. Um, as far as privacy on inspecting places, the city ordinances, there's already city ordinances in. Places that say that the fire, uh, the. Fire inspector and the planning commissioner can enter any building in the city. During reasonable hours, now whether that's legal or not, I don't know, but it's already in the ordinance. So I don't even know why there would be. Any question about if somebody, you know, if you did want to have an inspection program about entering somebody's property. The city already has the right to do. The city already has the right to do that, according to ordinances. You know, as far as the planning and building commissioners, you know, with the current planning and building commission.
If, if you would, Brian, kinda.
Okay, yeah, I guess the big thing is, why are they so backed up and hectic and all that? It's because of lack of leadership. There's no leadership there, they're not good managers. If they were years ago, they would have asked to get more personnel, and they would be able to retain the personnel they have.
Brian, if you would.
That's about it.
Thank you, sir.
Nancy Cross, five zero one Pearl Street. I spoke with some of you, some of you really stepped up for me too. I work for the Michigan City Transit, and along with your housing, along with this beautiful city that's a diamond in the rough, you need to also look into that transit system too. There's a lot of flaws, there's a lot of faults, and I see your city every day. And I see the boulevard, and I see the beach, and I see the west side and the south end. And we could really use, use some loving care from everybody. And um I've spoke to some of you, and some of you, like I said, have stepped up for me, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate all of you doing everything you do. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Deborah Vance, I'm at three eighteen Guardian Street, and I just wanna get up and say that I really appreciate all the hard work, whether or not it's work that people appreciate or not, and it might not be the work that really gets the applause, but you, you're out there looking for things to take care of for our community, and I appreciate appreciate every single one of you for that, I appreciate that.
Thank you. I pick that applause.
Tommy Kowick, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, now I want to express my gratitude to Councilman Paul Preswalinski and Mayor Perry and Marquess Electric and the local workers of IVW thirty-one for raining ourselves of these hideous purple streetlights throughout the city, finally. They're gone, hey, I couldn't stand.
Wisconsin doctors.
I'm sorry, Don. I'm sorry, I just wanted to, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But, you know, you, you, you know, I couldn't stand them, especially ones on the Cleveland Avenue extension, because you know, that's one of the roads that take you everywhere to Michigan City High School. And purple's not Michigan City High School colors, those are Miracle High School colors. So I promise I wasn't gonna complain about those anymore, so I guess I won't complain about Paul's Road anymore either. I also wanted to make a couple of public service announcements, Saturday, we can start receiving our park stickers for Washington Park at North Point Pavilion. They're uh free to all the city, civil city residents, as long as they bring their registration, also free if you live outside the city, but bring your uh outside, bring your registration, and bring your property tax bill, if you own property, I don't, between me and my mom, we get six of them. Uh well, the farmer's market's also starting up again Saturday, uh right at eighth, the eighth and Washington, noon to eight, all the way through October. You know how a bovine would compute his uh, his uh revenue from the farmer's market? He would use a calculator. My uh, another thing, Memorial Day weekend, one of my favorite events that we have here is coming up, it's the food truck fest. I tell you, last one, we had it was in nine, two thousand nineteen, right before all the pandemic happened. Now, uh last time around, I had a real good time right there in Washington Park, they had about a dozen of them lined up there along Fetter's Alley. I, I go up to the Jama- cruel running Jamaican jerk chicken food truck, and I said to the woman, uh hey, you wanna know something? It's just so happens I'm Jamaican too. And she looks at me like I'm crazy or something, and then I replied, well, that's right, because Jamaican me happy man. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Alright, I'm inspired now.
Patrick Vogts, Michigan City Park Department, uh on behalf of the department, wanted to thank Councilman Don Preblewinski for the generous donation, for the flowers for Washington Park, I'm sure you'll be happy once Sally and Sandy have uh time to get them all ready for you, and I hope you're happy when you see it. Thanks.
Yes, Steve Malden, how one oh seven K Lane. Um the Michigan City Sustainability Commission would like to thank the residents of Michigan City very much. We had a very successful Earth Month extravaganza at um Memorial Park, all there, and we had over four hundred participants this year, so that's great. Um also, the tree board has additional trees that they did not give out at our event. And they'll be available at the Michigan City Farmer's Market on Saturday, and all of them are native species. So, thank you very much.
Brian Gross, eight thirty West Sixth Street, I'd like to make one other quick comment if I could. A couple of months ago, I applied for building permits for my commercial building, again, my industrial building. I put in permit applications, the drawings, the checks and all that. Couple days later, I got it all back in the mail without even a note of why it was sent to me. This is something I dropped off right at the building uh commissioner's window in City Hall. I mean, very unimpressed with that whole department. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comments, close, council comments?
Councilman Preswalinski, go ahead.
I, uh Tommy, you forgot one public service message. Tax bills are out, make sure you see your tax bills and appeal them. Uh you'll have until June fifteenth, and I know I'm gonna appeal mine because it went up twenty-five percent. And also, another one you missed, Tom, is uh Monday, May, yard wastes is uh getting picked up. And uh, this is a real good one though, Tommy. So as you're going down Cleveland Ave, did you think you were going to see a deep purple concert? And, who said I didn't have a sense of humor? And the uh uh, you know, I think that we need to uh find out what's going on with this, uh how much money we bring in on this franchise fees. And also, that, so people know, I, I let, I didn't get to this point on the sidewalks. But years ago, we had revenue sharing money, and the city used to fix stuff like that. And then that revenue sharing money went away, and that's when they passed the ordinance to put the burden of fixing the sidewalks on the in, the homeowner. It didn't mean if you, if, if you rented a house, you're, you owned it, and I'm trying to figure out how I just got sad when I moved into my house, for you wanna know how much feet, how many feet? Over a thousand feet of concrete work, four inches to five inches thick by four feet wide, according to city code. Alright, this is how much people, I live on a corner lot, alright? So, I mean, this is something the city should be doing, and, and it's not twisting nobody's arm. They would, they used to do it, and no sidewalks, I'm gonna make the point, those sidewalks were put in, they were mandated as the development of that subdivision when they start building them homes. And I can't help it, it's someone would put in a substandard, you know, you're talking, my home was built nineteen thirteen. Alright, when I moved in there, y- the year after I moved in, I got a notice from the insurance company that they were gonna cancel me if the sidewalks weren't fixed. You can ask my brother Don how to floor it while they were. But over there in these different neighborhoods, it doesn't matter where you go, there's some neighborhoods, and I also believe that we should start a sidewalk program to have it put in, especially on the south side of town to get access. There's a lot of stuff that needs to be done here. Now, I wanna share this with you, and I'm gonna get it for you at the next meeting, I know y'all wanna go home. I, I sat down with Tracy Tillman, we, I don't know, for a couple hours, and we went over this study. You need to read it. Seriously, it's, it, it's worth the money to read. I have a map here, I have a map here that I'm gonna get copied for all of you. It is, and I had to file a Freedom of Information Act request to the sanitary district to get this map, and I wanna show you that it talks about inlets filled with stone, and you know when they were, they did that? In two thousand twenty-one. Now, whose administration was that? I know who it was, it was during this administration, alright? And I, I pestered Mister Cuss so long, he finally admitted that they did this. But then they have to file a Freedom of Information Act, and then and then tell me at a Board of Works meeting and Tommy Kowick to quit, we're beating a dead horse on these sewers? No. The money's there, this stuff's gotta get done. You got a ten million dollar pipe in the ground that nobody's using. It needs to get done, and I'm not, I'm, I'm gonna keep beating that like I'm my response to the mayor, I'm gonna keep beating that donkey, so it keeps going, alright? So anyway, I'll get you that information, but please read that study, that's why I had the clerk's office record it and put it on file. It was never recorded and put on file. I was lucky that this is something I saved when I got this, when they were the previous administration was trying to get a stormwater fee out of us. You remember that one, Tommy?
Yep.
Yes. So anyway, have a good evening, I'm done, thank you for listening. And I'm, I'm sorry that we took so long. Nick, did you get all the info?
Alright, very good.
So I'm in Ziggus.
I, I don't know if anyone's still listening, cause it's been a marathon, but I was asked to remind people that there is a job fair tomorrow at the Blue Chip from three to six. There's gonna be lots of employers. I mean, if people show up, you could actually maybe even get an interview right there on the spot. It's free, three to six P M, Blue Chip Casino Stardust Room. It's an opportunity for you to maybe change careers, get a job, see what's out there, but there are a lot of people hiring. And a second thing is, next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, so appreciate a teacher, say something nice to them and say that you appreciate them, it's a very hard job. Thanks.
Okay, Councilwoman, thank you. I just wanna bring up one thing here, uh you know, like when, when there's damage done to police cars, fire trucks, we get a report because that's this, uh the ordinance is forty-five thirty-eight. Now I'm gonna get in the clerk's office, Stacy, if you could work with me, you could give a copy of Terry Councilman, put it in their mail slot. Okay, forty-five thirty-eight, alright, and then also, send one to every department head in Michigan City. Then have them come to your office and sign a sheet that they got it. Alright, so that everybody understands what we have here, but anyway, it's a property damage and claims liability uh ordinance that was made out back in twenty nineteen. Preswalinski, Stimley, that's Patrick Hamilton and Paul Preswalinski introduce us. And I'm just gonna read a part of it. Is uh the controller's duty to provide counsel documentation regarding property damage and liability claims. Any property damage, the city controller shall provide the common counsel, either directly or by submitting it to the city clerk for distribution to the council with a copy of any and all documentation, hard copy and digital in the controller's possession regarding any damage to real or personal property owned by the city of Michigan City. Whether it's cars, whether it's buildings, whether it's whatever the city owns, if there is damage done, you know, we, the city council, by ordinance, are supposed to know about it. The other thing is, is uh including any of the, of its departments, agencies for which the city, including any of its departments or agencies pays either directly or through insurance claims fifteen hundred dollars more, fifteen hundred dollars or more for repair of the damage. Anything over fifteen hundred dollars, this body right here is supposed to know about it. Alright, liability claims, the city controller shall provide the common counsel either directly or by submitting it to the city clerk for distribution to the council with a copy of any and all documentation hard copy and digital in the controller's possession or control regarding any claim of liability against the city of Michigan City or any of its departments or agencies. For any tort, breach of contract, violation of civil li- of civil rights for which the city, including any of its departments or agencies, pays either directly or through insurance, twenty-five hundred dollars or more to resolve the claim by either mutual agreement or judgment. And then finally, theft, the city controller shall provide the common counsel either directly or by submitting it to the city clerk for distribution to the council with a copy of any and all documentation, hard copy and digital in the controller's possession or control regarding any theft of city non-cash property with a value of a hundred dollars or of a fifty dollars or more of cash. So anything that's stolen, a saw, a shovel, a tire, a rim, what have you. If it's more than a hundred dollars, we're supposed to know about it. So we can keep track of what's going on in this city, instead of people always coming asking for more, more, more. Well, why do we have to keep paying more and more and more when damages occur, liability, insurance is being, claims are being paid out? So I'm not saying anybody's not doing this, I just don't know if all the department heads are even aware of this ordinance, and they should be made aware of it, cause this is a law of the city, and that's how, how they're supposed to do their uh jobs, by reporting this stuff to the city. So, every, a copy will be distributed to every department head, and they will come in and sign a sheet in the clerk's office that they got a copy of it. And then that copy can be kept in the clerk's office wherever Gail keeps her information there. With that being said, is there a motion for adjournment? Motion to adjourn. You have a good night, everybody.